I just.
Oh, no.
Okay, so.
And we're live.
All right, we're on air.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. This is a work session tonight, and it is the twenty-fifth of November. So, we're glad to see all of our friends at home. I was about to pull a Miss Peggy, you know, I see Johnny and I see Billy. You know, I never heard her say she saw Shane. I never did see that, but anyway.
You all right?
No, ma'am, my feelings were kind of hurt, actually. Uh, we're going to bump up. We're going to move Chelsea May to the front because she has important things to do, and she's important people. So, Chelsea May, take it away.
Thank you for letting me go first. Chelsea LaRude, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first one to go over the sports market study analysis that we conducted last year, and then to do my fall update for C V B. So, we'll start with the sports market analysis, and I apologize, this slide has a lot of text on it, but as a reminder, the sports marketing study that we connect, conducted was in a partnership between the city and the Recplex, the Greater Burlington Indoor Sports Facilities Organization, to look at the turf and the, hopefully, to come, the courts, and the C V B. So, a three-way partnership on this study. And we asked the consultants to analyze the amateur sports venues that we currently have, meaning the Recplex, and analyze the amateur sports venues that are in the planning development. And at that time, that was the Fun City Turf and the Courts. The turf wasn't completely up and operational yet. Project the number of potential visitors that the venues could attract annually. Identify, analyze the economic impact of such venues. Identify a market saturation rate for a concentrated sport. Identify strategies to enhance the marketing efforts for attracting teams to compete here in Greater Burlington. Identify facility and community amenities that assist in attracting these teams. Analyze the facilities within a hundred-mile radius of us, and look at strategies to enhance our current tournaments and amenities to offer to the participating teams, and then evaluate the operational efficiencies between the Recplex and the turf and the courts. So, the final report was submitted in January of two thousand nineteen, and then we had a task force kind of study all of this and look over it in August. So, some of the recommended strategies that came out of the report from Johnson Consulting, which was our consulting firm that we hired, they recommended that we develop operational efficiencies between the Fun City Turf and the Recplex. So, their suggestion is that we have one general manager to operate both venues, and that would ensure that their, both venues are operating under the same policies, leverage each other's schedules efficient, efficiently. And they suggest that a private model would be the best route. They just said, just in looking at facilities around the area and kind of comparing us, that that's what they kind of seem as a best route. But, you know, this is just a consultant's recommendation. And, but I do have to give a lot of credit to the team at the Recplex and the turf. They have a really great communication strategy between the two of them, and they, they seem to work very well together, making sure that they can accommodate each other's events for overflow and things like that. So, I think they are operating very, as similarly as they can to create those efficiencies and kind of create that one brand for our community. Uh, the, another strategy that they came up with was work with local hoteliers to support sports tourism. That just, teams aren't coming here just for a tournament. We can make it a destination for them as well. Tournacations is kind of a new term in the tourism world. They're turning into family vacations because they're coming for a tournament. So, anything we can do to help promote the amenities that we have in the area to encourage them to stay a little bit longer or come earlier will help create a whole experience for them and not just the tournament that they're coming from. And the consultants did suggest that we do not have enough hotel rooms to support the weekend business for the potential that we could have with these facilities. So. They also suggested that we identify a tenant or a funding partner at each facility, and that is one way to kind of ensure that there's constant business within the facilities, whether that's working with local youth sports organizations, bringing in a sports medicine facility, something like that, that can help to bring in additional business or help enhance the tournaments on the weekends. And the partner would just be able to help attract more business to the complex. And they all, the final kind of recommendation that they came up with is to hire a dedicated sales representative. Right now, both facilities kind of have one manager trying to do it all. But if there was a, you know, consolidated management and a dedicated sales rep, they would have one person that could manage the facility and one person that could be out there constantly recruiting tournaments and teams to come to the area. It would be really good synergies, especially because both facilities have opposite off-seasons. So, the, you know, while one is working on spring and summer, the other one could be working on fall, winter, and kind of, so there's that constant business within the facility. And then the consultants did also recommend that we become members of the Sports Events and Tourism Association, which is a national association that gives you opportunities to find out what bids are out there available for national, regional tournaments, things like that. So, the C V B did go ahead and enact that membership out of destination fee dollars. And then we have staff at both the Recplex and the turf set up as kind of like employees of C V B in this, just in the memberships world, so that they can receive all of those benefits from the association as well. So, they have access to bids that are out there that we can try to recruit to the area, plus discounted rates to attend conferences and events, things like that. And then kind of some of the conclusions that they came forward with is just kind of, the biggest challenge we have is how do you market the destination to generate economic impact for your community and serve the local market at the same time? And then they've just really hit on the operational efficiencies there with the consistency in schedule, pricing, availability, and that sports tournaments will fill the weekends, but the weekends alone aren't enough to kind of keep these facilities operational. So, thinking outside the box and what are some other types of events or workshops or things that could be brought in, concerts, whatever, that could utilize those venues as well to bring in additional revenue outside of the sports tourism market? So, we did put a task force, small task force, together with representation from the C V B, the Recplex, and the turf to kind of analyze all of this. And just kind of the decision that was made at this point is just to continue letting the Recplex and the turf have that great open communication and just let them kind of be good partners, but still move forward with their own individual businesses, and then maybe reevaluate in the future. Questions on that?
Counsel?
I had a question.
Yeah.
Sorry. I had a question, Chelsea, on the number four, identifying a tenant, a funding partner. You mentioned like sports medicine. Can you think of some other ones that might be a good tie-in?
Um, they talked about, you know, like S C C could be a tenant, somebody that is out there constantly having practices and games. I kind of envisioned CISA as a tenant of the Recplex because they're out there doing practices on a regular basis and games. So, that sort of concept there. Okay, thank you.
How's, how's the turf doing financially? I mean, is it sustainable, you think?
Um, I don't know all of their financial numbers, but I do know they're trying to think outside the box and bring in other non-sports things to kind of hit on that consultant's recommendation there. They are receiving their destination fee dollars to kind of help stay break even, I guess. But it, they still didn't really have officially one full year. So, this, this year, this season will kind of be the true test for that first full year to figure out how that goes.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, joint leadership would go a long way to helping that as far as salaries.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thanks.
Were there any recommended adjustments with regard to whether or not we continue to collect a gate fee at the Recplex or things like that?
Um, not specifically in this analysis, but I did just have a meeting with Kirk and another tournament organizer just last week. And they talked about in the Des Moines market, they're not doing gate fees anymore. They're instead, they're charging one full team gate. So, the team pays their registration fee, plus this is the team gate. And then everybody, including their parents, walks in the, the gate the weekend of the tournament, not having to pay anything.
And are the fees that we're currently charging in line with what they're char, I mean, are we significantly less expensive or?
Um, you could make more money in this team gate concept.
Okay.
We're good?
Well, I guess one other thing, and I know you don't run the turf. Do you know if they're doing any winter leagues? Because that, summer leagues are integral to the Recplex, obviously, for non-weekends.
I think I have started seeing some stuff on Facebook with maybe a slow pitch league, and I think CISA's doing some winter leagues in there as well.
All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I had a question exploring the, the team gate fee thing. So, then anybody in the community could come and watch the games. Wow, I think you'd make a lot more off concessions that way.
Yeah, because you, yeah, you still have your concession.
My, my observation.
So, it's something to consider, that I know the team at the Recplex is thinking about that.
Okay.
Satisfied?
I'm good.
Yes.
Are we satisfied?
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Chelsea.
All right, we'll jump into my fall update then. Sorry, you get me for a little bit longer.
Please continue.
Um, so, as you know, this summer within the C V B and tourism world was a little crazy around here. It started off with the flood barriers breaching on January first, or June first, that did affect our welcome center. So, we give major kudos and props to the city teams that have been working to get that space cleaned for us and put back together. The epoxy on the floor back by the bathrooms was supposed to be done over the weekend, and then the wax on the floor in the former Iowa store space and our former storage space and the meeting spaces was supposed to be done today. So, we're very close to being able to move back into the rest of our spaces. And thank you for also allowing us to be able to expand into the Iowa store space. I think that'll be really great for the welcome center. We were able to work with Bonnie Baldwin's attorney and receive some of the product that she had at the store. So, as you can see, we have the pillows and the ornaments. And then we have been also working with her former staff and talking to visitors. So, what is the merchandise that they want to see down there? What are the souvenirs that they want to be able to take home? So, we're slowly working on building that inventory and creating a store down there along with the brochures and the normal welcome center things. We've decided we're going to wait to do official kind of grand opening until National Travel and Tourism Week, which is the first week of May. And that'll be a fun way for us to celebrate and do a ribbon cutting and kind of have some specials and things like that. So, stay tuned for May. Then we had the Very Vintage Market in July. There were a hundred and twenty-five vendors and about sixty-five hundred attendees that came from over a hundred and twenty-mile radius outside of Des Moines County. So, that proved to be another really successful year for that event. And I know they're looking forward to next year for that. That, because of the success of Vintage Market, Downtown Partners did also decide to create the new Pumpkin Spice and Holiday Nice Market that was down there this fall. So, that event is, Vintage Market is doing good things for helping draw visitors and creating new events off of that. And then we had RagBri, which was anywhere from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand participants. It's really hard to get that final number there. There are about three hundred volunteers, about eighty host homes, and seven campgrounds. So, it was huge for our community. We've heard a lot of really positive things from the RagBri riders. I think the community members enjoyed it as well. It was kind of a different experience being an overnight town, but that was fun there. And then we wrapped up the busy summer with Gus Macker for our second year. We had a hundred and fifty-four teams, which is about a twenty-five team increase from the previous year, which brought in six hundred and nineteen players from a hundred and forty-four cities and seven states. So, thirty-eight percent of our players come from outside of that ninety-mile radius of Des Moines County. So, of course, we'd like to see that number grow, more heads in beds. So, year three is our final year in our current agreement, and we'll be working hard to kind of strategize a little bit differently in how can we recruit more and kind of make that more of a successful event for our community. Looking at the impact of travel numbers, these numbers do come to us from the U.S. Travel Association, and just as a reminder, they are a year behind just on how they collect data. So, we're looking at two thousand eighteen numbers, and visitor expenditures for eighteen almost came in at a hundred and forty-five million dollars. And that is a four-point-three-three percent increase over the year before. So, we are seeing that grow. The tourism in Des Moines County also supports over nine million in state and local taxes and over a thousand jobs in the area. And in the Partnering for the Future Two goal that the partnership set five years ago in two thousand fourteen, we had that goal to increase tourism expenditures over the five years from five hundred million to six hundred and fifty million, and we hit six hundred and eighty-four, over six hundred and eighty-four million dollars in visitor expenditures. So, we definitely surpassed that goal there. Looking at hotel motel occupancy, also for the year two thousand nineteen, or the green bars is the current two thousand nineteen. We have numbers through October, and we've been seeing really strong occupancy numbers for the year, which is really good to see since we've had some decreases in the last couple of years. So, right now, occupancy for nineteen is at fifty-six percent, which is up six-point-seven percent from last year, year-to-date.
And that's with the new hotel rooms?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really good.
Yep, yep.
When did the Recplex open? Was it February?
The turf in February, yeah. Yeah, there was.
Recplex has been open a long time. Turf.
Really great growth in February when they opened with their first few tournaments. And July, I don't know what we had going on in July this year.
No, no, no.
Um, but if you look at that in numbers-wise, with fifty-six percent average occupancy, that's about four hundred and sixty-eight rooms that are booked on a nightly basis. When you think about two visitors, people per room, that's nine hundred and thirty-six visitors with an average daily economic impact over, of over a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So, daily, then you grow that for the whole year.
Daily.
You have some good numbers there. Uh, twenty nineteen, by the numbers, the C V B was able to distribute over sixty-five thousand dollars in grants, and that's through our community event funding dollars, which we set aside through the hotel motel tax collections and the sports regional, regional sports authority district grant that we received from the state. So, all in all, that supported thirty events within our community. And these thirty events helped to attract over eighty-five thousand visitors, and they stay for one-point-two-five days, so a little over one night, they're staying, which, but these events also contributed over ten thousand hotel room nights and over ten million dollars to the economic impact to the area. We have mailed out over eleven thousand community guides, which are direct requests based on our ads that we place, and these guides have gone to forty-five different countries in all fifty states, plus Washington, D.C. and Puerto Rico. And this summer, it was really fun. We had a gal stop up to the office, and she was from Austria. And she was visiting Iowa, and she had gone on the state's website and requested the state travel guide, and she had requested ours as well. Because we went through the trouble of mailing her our community guide, she said, "I have to go to Burlington." She, we weren't in her plans originally, but she spent a night here, and she was more than ecstatic about everything that she saw. So, it was really fun. So, we put together a little care package and had it shipped to her house. So, it was a special gift for her when she got home. So, that was fun. We've had over five thousand six hundred visitors at the welcome center. This is an extremely low number for us because we were closed June and July, our two busiest months of the year. So, we have seen a huge drop in welcome center visitation. But we have still had forty-seven states come to the welcome center and twenty-seven different countries. So, we are still reaching that international audience coming, requesting our materials, and then coming, following through and coming. And then we have had over four thousand daily community guide users on our digital guide, and they spend about four minutes within the community guide. So, kind of looking ahead, some of our big focuses for two thousand twenty will be our Gus Macker Burlington Tournament is the final year of our three-year, current three-year agreement. C V B steering has decided to make that a huge effort for them this year. They're going to focus on helping recruit more volunteers. It's a really heavy lift event, takes a lot of volunteers to make it successful, and then help us recruit more sponsorship dollars as well to try to be more financially successful there. And at our next meeting, we're going to set some goals and guidelines. What does a successful tournament look like? So, we can make a decision on if it makes sense for us to sign another three-year agreement with Gus Macker. Viking River Cruises is obviously also a big focus for two thousand twenty. Even though the cruises don't start till two thousand twenty-two, we're still working with their team to get everything in place. Right now, we are designing the tours. They have included tours that all guests take part in, and then optional excursions as well. So, the passengers will have the ability to kind of experience our entire region while they're docked here in Burlington. So, that'll be exciting. And then the welcome center, continuing to figure out what merchandise makes sense down there and creating a store is kind of a new adventure for us. So, that'll be a big task to make sure we do, do it right down there, so. And with that, I'll answer any other questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
Chelsea, this is kind of about Gus, Gus Macker, and I don't know if it has to do with the marketing or helping recruit people there, but my son played in the tournament last couple of years, and he's loved it. And something special that happened to him this year was after he was done with the game, someone came up to him and gave him a gift certificate for Dick's and said, "Congratulations on being the star player of the game." And he will remember that for the rest of his life.
That's exciting. Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, are there some other fun things that we can do like that? New sponsors that could do, you know, special MVP things or things like that to help bring up the experience for the players.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just keep doing what you're doing.
Thanks.
Great job.
Chelsea, how's the baby?
Good.
Good.
It's who I gotta go get.
We had a city team we could have won last year except for we had a weak link sitting out the other end. Chelsea, you might as well get out of here before I get into.
Is he wearing a blue shirt? Just curious.
It's blue for sure, my friend, but now. Thanks, Chelsea May. We're going to, uh, we're going to stick with discussion items. We've got Travis here from overseas, so we're going to let squires come in, so you can get in and get out.
Appreciate that. Be relatively short. I did throw a hand out to you. I want to throw that up there. Okay. So, we are, a partner of mine works with Burlington Waterworks, and they are exploring a capital project here in the two thousand twenty calendar year. Something to be aware of that the way the city of Burlington and Burlington Waterworks, you actually issue under kind of the same federal I D. status. So, when you sell debt to the bond markets, one of the things that you've been able to do is enjoy a small issuer discount as bank-qualified debt. So, all the debt that you've issued is filed under this bank-qualified debt status, which means that investors receive an additional tax break over just a non-bank-qualified debt obligation. So, typically, that means you're looking at interest rates that are point-one-five to point-two-five percent lower across the board. So, to the extent that we can preserve the ability to issue bank-qualified debt, we typically do so. And in your case, we looked at your bank qualification allocation and then some of your, your projects. And what I'm just going to take you through real quick, just as a kind of a review. In, in two thousand nineteen, you had three different series of debt issued, your C I P. projects, your sewer refunding, and the Locust Basin S R F. loan. So, the, the S R F. loan does not count against your bank qualification limit. That's able to be issued as a taxable loan. When you do a refunding, only a small component of that counts against your limit. But your new projects, if you look at the current year, all the way to the far right, you consumed about five-point-one-four million of your B Q. allocation in two thousand nineteen, which leaves you with about four-point-eight-five-five million. As we look ahead to two thousand twenty, Waterworks is holding a public hearing for six million dollars here in the near future for a two thousand twenty project. They do anticipate borrowing closer to five-point-five million total on that project. And then from last year's C I P., we had identified three separate projects. You're kind of, right, what I list as C I P. is just kind of your run-of-the-mill street projects, and then you're, you have a flood protection project on the riverfront, and then you have a Washington Street project that I think will likely be moved, and I won't steal Nick's thunder on, on that project. But, so, so that may come off. But, but as you see, as, as I work to the right, there's a couple of refinancings that we will be bringing your way, we think, right now would save three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars worth of interest for the city that we'll be able to look to complete in the spring. But you can see the current year totals, thirteen-point-four million when you throw Waterworks in there. So, that puts you three-point-four over. You have the option before the end of the calendar year to do something that's called a, a bank drawdown note, would be the, the typical way that we would explain it, and that you would close a financing that would allow you to take a draw here in this calendar year, but it would issue four-point-eight-five million dollars of debt. And ultimately, you would only pay interest on fifty thousand dollars of that total issuance. But what it'll do is it'll mark four-point-eight million issued in two thousand nineteen, which you have room, because in two thousand twenty, you're not going to have room. So, what that will allow us to do then is to make all of your debt for both calendar years fit within the, the bank qualification limit. Right now, the way that it's, it's worked out, since that debt that we would issue this year will be refinanced in the spring, you're not going to run any financing cost. You will run some legal expenses on the, the public hearing process. But ultimately, when we look at what's the value of doing that on the Waterworks financing, that's probably a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of less interest cost for them. On your two projects, if we just take the C I P. road projects and the flood protection, that's somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty thousand dollars less in interest cost for your loans as well. So, so doing it makes sense if we can accomplish it without causing a very, you know, significant amount of fees from doing the cost of issuance. We just say, "We'll just issue it all as non-bank-qualified." But right now, it looks like you'd be money ahead to jump through a couple hoops before the end of the year. We would look to contact local banks only on this one to be able to kind of move this forward. And something that they're familiar with doing, they, they do these types of loans all the time. So, maybe not quite to this magnitude, but obviously, the city has a good credit position. So, in other words, what we're, what I'm giving you the prep for is that next week, you would set the date for the hearing. You'd hold the hearing and issue on the sixteenth and then close this loan on the thirtieth of this month, so. It'd be on a fast track. Go ahead.
Restructuring this, are we not doing a bond issuance in two thousand twenty?
We will be, yeah.
But we won't be doing one the following year, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, I, I think you'll be doing, doing one each year. So, the, the restructure then allows you to do this as all bank-qualified.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Sorry. The, because this only gives you the small picture. When we get to the spring, you will see the whole five-year layout of what the debt looks like.
Okay.
But right now, you're just seeing.
This is just restructuring existing.
Yep. So, go ahead.
This is more just doing a borrowing towards next year's borrowing. And you'll, the mechanics of it, we'll borrow it in advance, the end of this year for next year's projects. Then next spring, you're going to essentially refinance that debt in a new permanent bond.
Yep.
Bond issuance.
Yeah, and this is just dealing with I R S. rules. They, they work in calendar years, so this, this is always, you guys have been fortunate enough, and we've always known that if, if Burlington Waterworks does a project, this is something we're going to have to look at. But we didn't get the go-ahead that they were moving until early November, so it's.
What project is?
What's that?
What, what, what project?
So, the projects that would get funded for us, we'll be borrowing four million dollars, and it would, it lists C I P. items and Washington Street flood protection. So, it's going to, we're, it'll get titled, what the title will be from Bob Justin's will be for flood protection and.
And roads and streets, yep. It's not going to mention Washington Street at this time. So, that all fits within the four-point-eight-five. So, the other thing that I just want to give a, an update. We've been looking, obviously, you guys don't have anything going on with capital projects on the sewer side, so we've been kind of circling the wagon with, with all of that information. And if you recall, as a city, it kind of, last year, we advanced. There's a few goals that we've been focusing on. One, staying within that seventy percent debt limit number as a policy target. Two, looking at trying to shorten up debt structure to save interest cost. Three is, are there opportunities to lower your property tax levy? And the numbers that we've thrown around are going from a three-eighty down to a three-forty, which is a significant decline. It's more than a ten percent decrease in your debt service levy. And then, you know, from there, what type of projects can, can still kind of fit within your personal constraints? So, as we've worked through these projects and looking through the street plan, the thing that I'm going to say is there's nothing on the street plan that I'm going to be the finance guy who, you know, poo-poos it and, you know, just throws it under and say, "You can't do it." Just understand there, there'll be some limitations. Some of those limitations might be if we're looking at, you know, let's say it's a bridge project in, in a given year, and that consumes, you know, four to six million dollars or whatever the number might be, might that be a year that you have to take a break on street projects? And instead of doing your normal overlays, you're just going to have to live within your road use tax funds for that year. So, there, there'll be some decisions that you'll have to make. None of this really impacts years one, two, and three. We're talking years kind of five, six, and seven in your C I P. funding program. The other thing I'll say is just managing projects will be important in terms of project scope. You can't let a bunch of $2 million projects become two and a half million dollar projects because then that circles the wagon to say now, all of a sudden, those make those other projects not be affordable. Or a $5 million project becomes six. You're saying, well, it's, it's a small increase. We wanna do these projects, you know. But for the most part, what we've looked at, um, we still do see a lot of possibilities for holding your tax increment financing revenues relatively stable, you know, not taking major increases there. Um, and still targeting that debt service levy decrease in years, was it 2023?
It's like 23 or 24.
2023 or 2024. I don't have the, the numbers right in front of me. Um, all of those things still fit. Your, your debt limit gets tight, um, but it's doable. Now, the other thing I'll say is we've looked at sewer projects and that the sequence of these, what, change every two days? Is that, the sequence and amounts change about every two days on these? And this is, and this isn't picking on anybody. It's just, there's a complicated series of projects that have to roll out.
And, and the, and the largest thing about that has been is we've been working with the DNR about trying to get into a, a, a different frame, series, sequence of projects, moving away from doing straight, uh, combined sewer system overflow work to looking at our system as a whole and have it be something that they can find palatable, that they say that even if we're not doing the CSO work, we're still accomplishing major components of what needs to be done. And they can see improvements to water quality and they have to be able to tie it to that, uh, that they can accept it. And so we've had a lot of give and take then on what's, what's the appropriate order on it. We've also looked at, as we're doing some of these other projects, for example, Main Street, and I think, I don't know how much Nick is gonna get into this in his presentation, but as Main Street has done with the Tiger Grant, uh, are we making sure that we're doing all of the sewer work that's associated with the, the sewer separation that needs to happen over the next 10 years? Because why would we put in a brand-new street and then
Absolutely.
six years later have to do that sewer work? Well, now you're advancing a project six years and how do you fund that? So that's the, that's the part where as we're, we're talking about making the pieces all fit together, we've, we've adjusted things an awful lot over the last three months. And then what's the, what's the one that you can afford? Well, each time we make an adjustment to it, it changes how, what we can do.
So 45 minutes ago, we settled on a plan now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it, we, a couple of months ago, we got the Sewer Master Plan and we got the sewer, I guess, lack of a better term, a sewer CIP plan.
Yep.
Wasn't that what was put together to address this specifically?
And we had a project list that, uh, that was developed through HR Green, that Sewer Master Plan that was developed like May and got presented then, uh, I don't know, July, August. Uh, that was, we were using that for planning in August when we were working with DNR, but we've added, that's then tweaked, been tweaked several times since then for affordability perspective. And then. Yeah.
Well, the integrated one is what was presented, presented at one point. It was like 140 million dollars in projects.
Yes, which, which is more than this, the, the master plan didn't have all, all the ex, not quite all the pieces. And, and so we, they, we used that and then we flushed it out and added other things to it. And.
I like what you did there. You flushed it out. I like.
Jim's punny today.
Uh, punny. I didn't even know I did it. So that's, there's no, no, nothing to be gained from it. Anyway, it's, we have, we have adjusted it several times and we're trying to make the pieces work. And we'll, it'll get adjusted more before, in January, when the, the new council seated and is looking at a, a CIP plan. Uh, you're gonna hear some of what he, what Travis is talking about now, what Nick's gonna talk about in the five-year road plan. Uh, a couple of weeks, I think we're gonna try to have Leo in to talk about the integrated management plan and the, and the pieces that we're trying to get accomplished there. Those will probably see a few changes even by January as to what we can really realistically afford. But there's gonna be some give and take because we can't hit every priority. We, we can't hit every goal of what we'd like to do. We'd like to lower the levy. We'd like to stay under that 70%. You've, you'd like to be able to, the different projects that Nick is gonna have, you'd like to be able to do all of them. Well, there's, you're not gonna do quite all of it. So we're gonna end up leaving a few policy decisions for the new council to have to make a decision on in January. So.
Yeah. So the, the place we're still sitting is, and we're kind of backing into this, is we wanna get that, keep that 3% sewer rate increase consistent and not have major fluctuations from that. So that's where we're at right now. Um, we're, we're trying to hold debt structure as is. There's a couple of years right now that don't quite work on the plan, but we're talking things that have, instead of doing a 20-year level debt structure, we have to ramp up for five years because we have a bubble of projects that need to happen because of the way you're sequencing. And then five years later, that bubble goes away. You're not concerned about it. So we're, uh, that's all manageable and it, and it looks better than it did two months ago. Um, and then we've used some TIPS support to, to help with this because we're, we're trying, again, trying to keep all the pieces together. Um, so there's nothing that I would say right now is a flashing red light that says, stop, redo what you're doing. We're just gonna have to tweak around the edges when we get to the spring a little bit. So again, that was more than, you weren't anticipating any overview from me, but Jim and I met this afternoon and we just kind of flushed through some things with Nick and I, it looks pretty good. I, I came here thought, thinking that we were going to have to, say, drop some projects and we're not there yet. We just modify and maybe wait a little bit.
What year's the bubble?
On levy rate?
Uh, no, on the projects you talked about.
24 to 28.
On the sewer side.
On the sewer side. Yep. It's just, it's just a lot that, those years. So, um, with, and the, the numbers, just by means of, of looking at it, right now, the way that your existing debt is structured, you'll repay about $7 million of principal those years. With your new projects, you're also adding about $7 million of principal that are paid off between 24 and 28. Uh, so there's $15 million of principal paid off in those six years right now, five or six years. Um, and we need to move about three and a half million dollars out of that to make the model work right now. So, you know, that's, conceptually, that's not a big adjustment, but we, we can't make, oh, well, let's just make the adjustment and move the debt out and move the debt out and move the debt out. We have to make certain works. And right now it does. To just move that three and a half million out to the next five-year section, you're fine. Uh, you also may just have enough principal balance or project fund balance in your sewer fund to be able to just make those payments. But we gotta hit those coverage ratios and those are the things that are holding you up in those years right now.
And for perspective, we're looking at over, I, I think 50 million worth of sewer work to be done between now and 2030 is that we're trying to model. How do we make this happen?
So it's, I mean, to say that you don't have any big double-digit increases on paper right now is a, is a very good thing compared to most of what our other clients are dealing with. So. Other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Again, not, no, no action, anything related to that component. The thing that we'll be asking is bringing you that set date for hearing next week. Um, so if you have other questions, let us know. We'll be communicating with banks probably, uh, the first of next week, um, after your, your meeting. So.
Right on.
Thanks, Travis.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, Travis.
Thanks, thanks for moving me up. Appreciate it.
Hey, no problem.
See you in a few weeks.
Yeah, catch me on the flip side, bro.
I might be here on the 16th.
You might be here on the 16th. I was about to say, you've only got till the 16th and then I'll be back. Alright, drive safe, my friend. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and bump up number two. Bree is in the house. So we're going to, uh, do the Bree.
Who's Bree?
Update, uh, tonight. Bree?
Mike Quinial, Executive Director for Bree, Burlington Riverfront Entertainment. I have a letter here from Casey Fleming, which is the President of our board. Uh, he was unable to make it. So I'm just gonna read that for you and then, uh, answer any questions you may have. So, uh, so, Dear City Council Members, thank you for allowing us to, uh, be a part of the agenda today. My jaw, my apologies for not being able to attend. I had a previous scheduled engagement and could not be rescheduled. As we all are aware, Burlington Riverfront Entertainment entered into a contract with the City of Burlington to manage the Port of Burlington, the Memorial Auditorium, and the Depot. We entered, entered to, in, entered into a three-year agreement in January of 2018 and hit the ground running. The first year, based on contractual 20% revenue shared with the city, we gave a check back to the city for over 36,000 and saved them around $40,000 in operation expenses, totaling an estimated savings of around 75,000. Most notably, the auditorium was busier, being operated leaner, and saw better attendance and revenue than it had in over a decade. We were beginning to hit on all cylinders and had a big year of entertainment planned for 2019. Then the flood hit and as a result, we were not able to fulfill our exciting plans. Our marquee summer concert had to be moved or relocated and a dozen of other events canceled. As a result, we've lost around $70,000 as an estimate of, of revenue in which is very low. We, we directly affect the amount of, uh, which, it directly affects the amount which we can give back to the city in 2019. After some discussion with our board, we would like to ask for a one-year extension to the existing agreement. This would take us to 2021, in which time we would have a better, a much better body of work to present for a long-term agreement moving forward. The riverfront and entertainment in Burlington is headed in the right directions. We are asking for an extended year to achieve the goals of keeping the riverfront buildings viable while continuing to lower the subsidy from the City of Burlington. Thank you for partnering with us and a consideration for this request. Regards, Casey Fleming, President, Burlington Riverfront Entertainment.
Alright. So anything you wanna throw on top of those logs?
No, I mean, we, we were, and we were here at the end of 18 or beginning of 19 and kind of ran down some of the stuff that we were, we were really looking forward to. Uh, we were super excited about this year. This year's been tough. I mean, the city, you guys know better than anybody how this year has ended. Uh, and so, you know, we were, we're excited for the next year. We, we wanna do everything that we had talked about this year, next year, and just keep growing and moving forward. Um, we've got a lot of cool things that we talked about last year that we are gonna work on. Mannheim is already working on dates for next year. Um, we're working on summer concert stuff and everything. So like I said, we just, we'd like this, this extension to really prove to the city that we can make the, the riverfront and the depot, uh, important for the city.
Man, I can't, you know, I'm one of your biggest fans, but I can't, uh, I can't stress enough, uh, the job, um, that you and Carol have been doing down there.
Thank you.
I just, uh, uh, I always knew that you could, my friend. You're the concert man. So, so I'm just, uh, yeah, it's good to hear that, yeah, and we all know that the flood really did, did a number on us. But before, before the floodwaters came in, we were rolling.
We were, yeah, we had.
We're rolling. My friend, I say we like I was a part of it.
You were, you came down and helped with the haunted house and, you know, that was one of the, the most exciting events we did in 2018. And we are bummed and excited for next year to do it. Uh, we had big plans for this year, couldn't do it, but, you know, next year, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it bigger and better. So, uh.
Everybody's gonna be trying to be like Bree.
Right?
Counsel?
You know, one thing I think is really important to highlight, and I've had the opportunity to, to, to attend their board meetings through the last couple of years. It, it's not, I mean, Mike and David are doing an amazing job, but there's a really awesome group of people behind them that are helping put on those concerts. That summer concert took what, probably 40 or 50 volunteers from start to finish?
Oh, at least, yeah.
And, and, and it just, it takes an entire group of people to make that a success. So I wanna make sure that we recognize them. So, and, and from my position, I'm full in favor of, of granting the annual, the 12-month extension to, uh, give them an opportunity to, uh, continue doing what they're doing.
MPT?
Yep. Uh, you know, the events that I've been able to go to, one being the haunted house, which was amazing. And I was really bummed that there wasn't, you weren't able to do it this year. Uh, and I know a lot of other people were disappointed as well, but.
We had a ton of phone calls about it, but it just, and it just, the building wasn't safe to do it. And if we're not, if we can't do it full steam ahead, I'd rather not do it at all. And that's kind of the way we looked at it. It was just like, there's no, there's no, uh, sense of doing it halfway.
Yeah, that wouldn't have, yeah, that wouldn't have been very good. So I, I think you guys, um, you know, I have faith in you and your group and all the volunteers. I know a lot of people feel very passionately, uh, about all the events that they're involved with. So I think, I don't know when it would be a, if it would, if I would be able to vote on it or anything like that, but I definitely support you guys.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, I've got the chance to work with you a lot on different events, you know. And I will, I'll be honest with you, when you said you were gonna do haunted house the month of October, I thought you were crazy. And it ended up being one of the bigger events. Uh, I think you guys looked outside the box and midget wrestling was huge. We had a great turnout.
It's coming back in March.
I know, it's coming back. That's why I got.
You know, I said that. Somebody said, you can't say that. You have to say little people wrestling. I said, really?
No, no, they wanna be called midget, extreme midgets. That's what they wanna be called. I, I, I did, um, would be a, definitely agreeable looking at BRE extension. There's a couple of questions that I do have though. With, with BSD no longer in play, they weren't in play this, this last year, probably not, who holds the liquor license?
They do. We manage it for them, but we, they, the Steamboat Day still holds the liquor license.
Okay. Well, that, I think, that should, in my opinion, that's something I'd like to look at because of the, if the group's not there. And I'm a big Steamboat Days proponent. My father and I were both presidents of it. But if the group's not there, it ought to be under your management. So that's something that I would probably have to really look at before an extension goes, to be honest with you.
Sure.
You know, other than that, you know, my hat's off to you and David and, and the board, uh, because it, you've taken a project they said couldn't be done and showed progress. You know, I'd like to think where we'd be at today if we didn't have this flooding this year, but that goes all across our town, virtually.
Sure, absolutely.
So I, I'd, I'd like to, you know, before we just rubber stamp the one-year extension, there's a couple of things I think we need to look at.
Good point. John, maybe, Mike, maybe you wanna hit on this or somebody else, but, but BSD is still there and it is still an active part of BRE. And, and the two organizations work behind the scenes really well together to put the events on. So I don't wanna, Burlington Steamboat Days still has it, but it, but they're still involved. And, and they are still actually, unless I'm wrong, but they are still working to put an event on in the future whenever that happens or how that looks. So.
I agree. But our agreement's with BRE, not with Steamboat Days.
Correct.
And if they're getting a piece of your revenue, as I understand it, with all the liquor license, that's backwards, in my opinion. And that's just my opinion. I, I, I think that needs.
Good point. So, it's a good point.
If I may, I could speak to that piece of it, but to the agreement, do you want me to do that?
Sure.
So BSD has a contract with the city as does BRE.
Give us your name.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Amy Burkhart, address to at this one, or this is less formal. Yeah, 2633 Cliffwood Drive. Uh, so I serve on the executive board as of BRE and also on the executive board of BSD as the liaison between the two groups. Um, and Tim Lundgren is the President of the Burlington Steamboat Days group as well. So he's here too and could speak to this. But, you know, the city has a contract with BSD to manage the liquor license through the end of 2020. And those were set to be expiring at the same time. BSD would not be asking for a liquor license extension for that one-year period that BRE or Bree is asking for because the goal of these two groups is to more formally consolidate. Um, in January of this year, the boards already did that. So there is one board and BSD is functioning as a committee under BRE, such as Heritage Days has its own committee and et cetera. So BRE would be the, the organization putting on Steamboat Days after the conclusion of 2020, when that contract expires. But BSD is in the process of putting back on a June festival in partnership with Burlington Riverfront Entertainment, where BRE would manage all the entertainment aspects, just as they did their summer concert this year. And BSD would take on the role of putting on the community events to keep it being this community signature event and festival and having a free-for-all kids' day and a parade and all of those things that have made it kind of the community event. So in order to have the funding in place to carry forth those plans, we need to make sure we don't change any, you know, funding sources kind of midstream since we're in the planning of that. But we would not be asking, BSD would not be asking for a liquor license extension to go along with BRE's extension. So our, our contract would still expire at the end of 2020.
So what, what's, but what's going to, well, maybe I shouldn't be getting into that, but I'm just saying, what, what's the plans for BSD after 2020?
It would be put on by Burlington Riverfront Entertainment. So it's essentially the two groups are looking at, you know, BSD kind of gifting the event, all of the, the, remaining financial resources, all of the equipment, all of that kind of stuff to BRE. So BRE would manage BSD.
As it already is.
I'm sorry. Nobody asked you to speak. I don't know who that gentleman is. I don't recognize that guy.
So at that point, you know, at the end of 2020, and, and these two groups are in, um, even though they're kind of consolidated, you know, they two, still are two legal entities at this point through the end of 2020. So we're working through all of. So, we're working through all of that with vendors, sponsor contracts, insurance, you know, all of that piece to, at the end of two thousand twenty, come together as a fully consolidated group, at which point the legal entity that would dissolve would be BSD.
And to answer your question, John, at some point BRE will hold the liquor license.
That's the goal.
Once the contract.
But we weren't looking to, to redo those contractual relationships that are in place now.
Right on. The reason I brought it up, because he's asking for an extension and he's, he needs to know what that's going to be, so.
Correct.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to know, is David Crowe going to be continuing helping along?
Absolutely. I couldn't do without him.
That I'm totally against, thanks to that. Hey, I just want to say again, man, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job. We tried to bring in out-of-towners to do the job that only people that live in Burlington can do.
Got to know the area.
Appreciate you, my friend.
Absolutely.
Both of you.
Thank you.
And, and all the behind-the-scenes people that do all the hardworking and all that good stuff.
Don't forget the tree lighting Saturday.
And I'm lighting the tree, I'm, I'm so excited about that.
And I'm driving the car, he may never get to the tree.
It's a good, it's a good point. I appreciate it. Right on. Counsel, are we satisfied?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Just a, a question for, who, who did we, the, the council sign an, an agreement with to look at the idea of taking over the auditorium?
Ryan Jensen.
Which, he has a six-month agreement right now that you can't do two agreements at this, at the same time.
But we don't have a start date.
When are we going to hear from him?
He would be looking to start at the end of, when BRE, when their contract ended, if they were doing that. Now, the, the scope of what we talked about and what he presented was doing a long-term lease with him having ownership of the auditorium and potentially developing a hotel in that area. What you're expressing tonight is that you are all in favor of continuing a, a long-term relationship with BRE, which is fine, but he spent a few thousand dollars on his development based off of your willingness to look at.
Well, I didn't say we'd look at it tomorrow.
I, I don't think we're, I mean, unless I misheard something, but I don't, I don't think that we've all agreed that we're going to do a long-term lease with BRE this, just a one-year extension to the current contract.
Which is, which is going to be in conflict with what you're trying, what the other group is trying to accomplish.
We need to at least put it off long enough to hear from the other gentleman.
Yes.
Since we gave him six months, is what you're saying.
Yes.
It's agreed.
So, when, when is that then?
Uh, he's looking to come back in probably the end of January would be my guess, save, he's been working with Vian Stern Kim, Leo Foley, to, for what his schedule of work would potentially be in making sure that it meshes with what the Tiger Grant work is. As he does that, I think that, I think that he's communicated to Leo what, what they would do and gotten it to where Leo can get to as, as final the designs as what is possible on the Tiger Grant. Which gives us a little, I mean, Leo needed that like in December. I, I thought it made sense that they didn't try to present and get to you. This is a bad time for that group to present to counsel as you got to transition, the councils going on. And you got Christmas coming up. So, my, my recommendation to them was to have it happen after the beginning of the new year, and that my guess is it would be the second work session in January where they were making a presentation.
When is BRE's contract up again?
End of next December.
End of next December. So, we've got time.
There's time.
The, the thing, the thing would be is that we, we need to bring it back and consider it. It's under good, good consideration, but we do need to hear.
And, and know that you have two different routes to go. And so, one, one cert, you can do the BRE extension, but you're going to have to know that if you do one, you're not doing the other.
Right.
Dana Johnston with BRE. So, just a little insight on this. So, if we have this situation, one of the biggest things that we look at when we're scheduling events is a year ahead. So, we, our concern with all of this is that this lingers on and on and on, and then all of a sudden, we get an answer next December, and we've already scheduled all these events that we've put in deposits for. So, I just want to make the council aware of, a lot of things that we do are six months to a year ahead, just so that you are on the understanding, and I hope that we can all discuss that at that time.
Dana, I would say in my mind that once we hear in January, it's going to be a pretty quick decision for the Tiger Grant anyway, so I don't anticipate it dragging out.
Okay.
I mean, pictures should be pretty clear, Feb, start of February.
And even if he comes with a proposal, if we don't, as a council like it, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right. But I just wanted you to be aware of our time schedule on those kind of things, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You guys have just been wonderful tonight. Everybody except for the gentleman in the white shirt in the back. So, anyways, are we satisfied?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming down, guys. We hope you got everything squared away for you. Okay. Now, let's, let's go back to, to the beginning. We will be having Mary's Awards. Counselor Kreiser. Number two is a public hearing consideration of a sale of vacated portion of former alley right-of-way located north of the property at twenty-four oh eight to twenty-four ten Flynn Hills Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisdale.
This alley was originally vacated by city ordinance in March nineteenth of nineteen eighty-four. Some of the portions of alley have been sold, a lot of it still remains as city right-of-way or vacated city right-of-way. The current owner of twenty-four oh eight, twenty-four ten has requested that this be sold, Diane Coleman, to her. She has some trees in the back in the alley that are not really accessible by anyone but her, that she wants to remove. I think there's some hazard trees, some dead or dying diseased trees there. We don't have a means to really get back there. We'd prefer that this be sold to her and she take care of it, which she's willing to do, but she doesn't want to do that unless she owns it. So, she asked to purchase this for a dollar. It's more of a liability for the city than anything, so we'd recommend selling it and having her be able to take care of the trees as she sees fit. This was vacated, you know, thirty years ago and nothing's happened since then, so we, based on that timeframe and the condition of the property, we'd recommend going forward with the sale based on her purchase.
I think we should have sold it for at least a dollar five, but I'm not going to make a stink about it. Counsel?
No questions.
It's all good.
Dollar seven.
I appreciate that.
I'll give it cents.
All right. Okay, number three, thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Number three is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Lion Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Highland Avenue. Mr. McGregor.
So, in front of you is a resolution for installation of a new street light on Highland Avenue. Eric will be throwing up a slideshow, kind of showing where this is located. This was in the packet as a map, as an exhibit. So, the requested light is the yellow dot, mid-block of Highland Avenue between Birdie and Gracia. The red dots are existing streetlights. It was requested a, a neighbor across the street. In my memo, I said that I would not recommend the installation. I spoke with the police chief, said it's quite dark in the area. My rationale as to the reason why I did not recommend it is because it's a mid-block light and fifteen, or ten to fifteen years ago, we went throughout the city and removed a lot of the mid-blocks. And based, based on monetary reasons, I said that I wouldn't recommend it. It, I don't, it doesn't bother me if it were to be installed. It is dark in the area, there's some tree canopy that may prohibit some of the light from spreading, spreading, but my rationale on not recommending it is that I don't want to head down that same path, the cit, for city to install a bunch of mid-blocks. This was not one that previously had it. However, I've seen the trends that have occurred upon a recommend, you know, approved streetlight install. You get a lot of them that come, in this time of year, when the, when daylight savings occurs, it's darker earlier in the evening, people tend to notice that more. So, that's, that's the reason why my recommendation was to not install. It's just, it was a monetary recommendation.
Well, I think the gentleman reached out to you, he contacted me on social media and he had to, I, I did go over there, it is dark, but it appears to have the, I guess I'm unclear where we're at with Lion. It appears to have the old-school, older-style lights, they're not the LEDs. You know, I think either if we replace the current ones with the LEDs, which is their long-term goal, as I understand it, it might be bright enough, because those LEDs are a heck of a lot brighter. So, is there a chance to ask them to replace the three on that block first?
Potentially, yes. The, so the, the conversion plan was as the old ones.
Went out.
Went out.
So, you want me to take my baby gun and go take care of that?
I do not recommend that.
Sorry, I didn't really say that.
That's a good point.
I, I can talk with.
I think because when I was up there, because it's on a bluff and there's no real lighting behind it, it makes that street a little darker.
It is very dark, because I went and walked it last night, and it's kind of misleading this time of year because the Christmas lights are starting to come out, so it wasn't as dark as it would have been without the Christmas lighting. But it's really dark and there's a lot of older mature trees. It is, it's a murky and dark street.
I guess I'm just wondering if we wouldn't set a precedent by putting a half-block light in if we replaced those block, those street, those three lights on that block, if Lion would do that for us.
I could, I can speak with Matt about, about looking at that.
Dude, I think that's a good idea.
However, I don't, I, I just wanted to make it aware by my recommendation that, you know, that this habit could grow, you know, seven dollars a month for one light doesn't amount to a lot, but times, you know, five hundred, it starts to prove a pretty good monthly bill.
I understand it, and I do try to drive the, the areas, I take your, your recommendation, but I do try to drive or walk the areas, and I did, and this one was unusually dark, in my opinion.
It was dark and something or another. So, I mean, if, if, if we can ask Lion for a little help and replace those three lights, it might take care of it, because they are much brighter. Every time we see one of those replaced.
You can tell.
Uh, it makes a big difference, and maybe we could get by without putting a half-block light in, in this particular street. But I also don't want everybody saying, oh, I want an LED too.
And I know there has been a neighbor that's had some tinkering with someone trying to mess in their garage, so maybe that has a factor too. It's dark, so people feel, ooh, no one's going to see me, so.
Think you could find that out before the meeting?
I'll be able to speak with Matt in between now and then.
Okay.
I'll be able to, I'll bring that back on Monday.
Sweet. You guys good? Everybody? Okay, let's go to the consent. Uh, the first is a resolution approving nuisance abavements for various properties. Nobody ever says they have a problem with that. The second is a resolution approving, approving purchase of replacement six hun, six thousand pound forklift for public works. Mr. McGregor.
No, I shouldn't have walked away. So, the memo or the, the resolution in front of you would approve the purchase of a replacement forklift. For the forklift, that was damaged during the flood events after the, the flood wall breached. The, the dollar figure is thirty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-three. We get a, some trade-in value for scrap for the forklift. It is, it's no good or of no value other than the scrap price. FEMA, it, this has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. We haven't received verification that it is a replacement or that they're going to replace the cost of it. However, we do need to have this forklift. We use it for quite a few operations, so I would think that FEMA would replace this forklift. They've given no indication that they wouldn't.
When will we find out? I mean.
Is this the only forklift?
Who knows?
I think that we replace it and then we submit for claim and find out whether they would pay for it or not, that's.
So, make them say no is basically what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is this the only forklift we have for this area?
We have, we have a couple of other forklifts, but we.
Because we just bought a boom, do, didn't we? Did we just buy?
We have a rough-terrain forklift.
Yeah.
But we use multiple forklifts, not only in flood operation, but, you know, a lot of times, the forklift is up at public works and for other things.
So, this is a forklift that's kept in a different spot?
It was in the garage at the time of the breach, because we were using it for flood operations. We trail it back and forth.
Counsel? Thank you, sir. Number three is a resolution amending fees and charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Call Course. Tisdale?
We just went through a fee evaluation on season passes. We've had discussion over the past year on high school teams with some outside of the area teams contacting us on usage of the course, and fee is something, I, I think it occurred quite a long time ago as far as requiring junior season passes for team members, but we haven't had a charge in over the past number of years. But did want to move forward with a fee associated with high school teams so that we can have equal, I guess, usage or payment for any team that uses the course. They do shut down the course when they have an eighteen-hole meet. Does create more traffic at the course and then with nine-hole meets, and then if there's leagues, might reduce ability to play, to play. Also, the golf course is an enterprise fund operation, and we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to be successful out there. So, our recommendation would be to require seventy-five dollars for each team participant that would allow play throughout the golf season. If they want to play throughout the year, we do have a junior pass that's available, that's a hundred and forty dollars available for anyone. Would work with teams on nine-hole meets at no charge as the schedule allows, but would require a fee for eighteen-hole, eighteen minimum tournaments. Just kind of laying out some of the provisions, making sure there's communication with the golf course and the high school coaches on schedules, especially with leagues and other tournaments that we have, and then having a roster of the golf team to make sure we know who's out there and then having them sign in. A lot of this already occurs, but just want to make sure it is down and very clear to the coaches of what's expected and what's required. So, this is, would be recommended for currently with the two area teams playing out there, but as I said, we have had other teams approach us on play at the course. I don't know that we could handle a number of, a great number of teams out there beyond what we have now, but if someone were to drop out or others were to approach us, at least we'd have a fee schedule that we could present to them.
Counsel?
Eric, I was talking to a PE instructor the other day, and he feels that golf is a sport that's really expensive to get into, and I don't know, do they have rental clubs there? Like a youth would buy the hundred and forty-dollar pass, would there be rental clubs and then they could learn the sport, love the sport, and then become dedicated?
There is rental clubs, they do cost, we do have a junior golf program out there as well to help educate on golf, but.
Yeah, I knew about that.
Golf is, does cost money more, and you can't go out, like the tennis courts, you can't go out and just play. You do have to pay anywhere you go, and it does take quite a bit of time as well. It's two hours for nine holes or four hours for eighteen. So, there are some things that go along with golf that do restrict, I guess, ability, whether it's time or money to play, unlike some other sports, and something we try and stay conscious of through our rates and making sure we offer those junior passes that are considerably less than the regular season passes. One thing for this, estimated for an eighteen-hole event, that would, could be seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars in cost with that sixteen, or eighteen, or sixteen minimum, and then for teams, it'd be about, yeah, roughly two thousand dollars per, per school that, that would generate revenue, so.
Is that, is that, Eric, that rate in season, is that only available to the two teams that play there?
Yeah, just before those out for golf on the team. If you wanted, like I said, the junior pass allows play throughout the whole year, so. Yeah, just before, uh, those out for golf, um, on the team. If you wanted, like I said, the junior pass allows play throughout the whole year. So.
I was just, I was just wondering if, you know, like a team that plays at Wapalo or wherever the course is, if they wanted to come down here and play. Cause it's a better course. You guys do a nice job. I was just wondering if that was available. So.
Yeah, that's something we could explore if there's a certain rate for other teams, but.
Okay.
Satisfied?
Yeah.
Anybody?
Yep.
Counselors?
I'm good.
Good.
All right. Well done. Number four is a resolution authorizing assignment and assumption of lease associated with purchase of real property locally known as one twenty-three North Fifth Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisdale?
Is this, uh, say, or BNSF property?
Oh.
Yeah, I would tell you IGIS this.
Yes, if you look at the, the lease in here, not that I haven't looked at the agenda today, but I haven't. You, the BNSF property, they have an existing lease with PQL, um, Incorporated. Is that right? Uh, and it, it has the amount in there and I'm not sure if that has been paid for a year in advance or, or if it's, if they're paying on a monthly basis, but regardless, the lease is, is in place. Uh, it has, if you look at the terms, it shows that it, uh, has a thirty-day out on it. Uh, allows us as we get to a point where we, uh, are ready to do any construction work in there that, uh, we'll be able to terminate the lease. Uh, we have not talked to PQL. I know that back when we first started these negotiations that, uh, Jason Hutchison had gone and talked with them to let them know, hey, we're going to be, begin having these discussions for a place that, uh, you're potentially going to be looking for, needing to look for a place to be. Eric, have you, I know that we brought this up just a tad at a meeting that there. Do we have the ability to have some contact with them even to see if there's some potential other locations for them as we move down the road? That we'll have to have as we move through this, this process. So what you have here would show, shows that this lease transfers over to us as a new property owner. Any rents that's been paid in advance will be prorated to us from BNSF. And then, yes, we just do have to live by the terms of what's in here with PQL, but, uh, there, we do have the ability to get out to make sure that we're doing the other things that we're looking to do on that lot with the new parking lot. Outside of that, uh, BNSF, you know, when we went through the sales process on that or the purchase agreement here a couple of months ago, they talked about needing up to six months for closing. Uh, they'll be in a position to do closing, uh, after we take this action the following week. The mayor would need to be able to be available to sign, I think, December twelfth.
Sounds good.
Everybody satisfied? All right. Number, uh, five, we got a public hearing set for, uh, December sixteenth. This is consideration of an ordinance residing in the property located at three thirteen North Roosevelt Avenue. Zone C two general commercial to also include our four multifamily residential and a planned unit development overlay zone is allowed by the city zoning of the city of Burlington, Iowa. It's going to be a party. Guys, make sure you're there for that. Okay, uh, now discussion items. Uh, Annette, class of eighty-seven, treasurer's report.
October's treasurer's report is in the packet. June's was not because there was no changes. So just so that you know that, that's why it wasn't in there. Um, we got our property taxes. Everything looks like it where it should be. Other than the capital projects, there are timing issues because we're waiting on, we get reimbursed for funds. Other than that, there's nothing that's really out of the ordinary or unexpected. Then we'll be doing our transfers in the end of December. So that'll take care of some of those things. Some of the capital project balances that have deficits will have transfers going into them. Cause we only do that twice a year. So.
Just make sure everything looks good up until December sixteenth. All right, kid.
All right.
We love the job you're doing, counsel. I don't have any questions.
I was just gonna say the one fund that's in the hole right now is golf. Um, and that would be one that, um, we lost forty thousand there last year. And we're doing a fifteen thousand dollar subsidy this year. I think there's like eighty thousand of equipment. So we might've had a piece of equipment that's already been bought out there. That we haven't done a transfer for, but it's one to watch where that balance goes as we get towards the end of the year.
Correct.
And how well that they are performing.
Yeah, cause that one, it's seasonal too. I mean.
It's seasonal.
They expected them to hit anyways.
Being negative for a while. I mean, until we get to spring and hopefully.
Well, and it, and it kind of depends on what the weather is.
Correct. If we have a bad winter, late spring starts.
Don't try to jinx this, Annette. Let's think positive.
I am positive.
Okay. You guys good?
Yep.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, uh, number six is the depot. Mr. McGregor?
Uh, so based on an email that I had sent out last week to, uh, the city council, um, on the in- investigation into what it would cost uh, to bring the, the north side, the former Greer's restaurant, uh, up to a, a space that the senior centers, uh, folks could use, um, as a, as a new place. It was thirty-four thousand five hundred, uh, as an estimate. That didn't include any equipment. There's a lot of equipment in the current facility, uh, that could be repurposed. But that was the construction cost of, uh, bringing the floor up to level, um, installing a new sink, uh, with the existing penetrations. And then a new countertop, um, and cabinetry, um, to be put in there. If we were to choose to go this route, uh, there's probably some tables and chairs that could be purchased. The existing ones at the facility are fairly heavy and, uh, um, could, could easily be replaced. But I just wanted to discuss this. If we are choosing to go forward, I, I need to bring to your attention also, uh, that Mr. Caston has showed, uh, the facility. And I know that they've been working on some numbers, uh, to do a restaurant in that place. Uh, so they are, and just so you're aware that there is somebody that was interested in that facility.
That facility or?
At Greer, at the former Greer's. So I don't know where that's at in their development. I know that this conversation, if you elect to move forward with some sort of work for the senior center, obviously changes that conversation. But just wanted to make you aware that he had shown it and someone had, was looking at it. So.
How long, do you know how long that's been? Cause didn't we discuss that like a month ago?
Uh, I, I believe we spoke about that and I know they had a contractor in there the other day to kind of understand what some of the plumbing costs would be. So they're trying to put together some numbers on what that investment would be.
So they're still, they're still continuing to work through their, their issues.
I don't, I don't know where they're at in that.
But it's not something that where we talked to somebody a month ago and we haven't heard from him since. I mean, they're working on.
It's, it's still the same people that I had brought up.
Okay.
I still, and we need to look at, uh, um, what building is more important than getting on the tax roll, uh, you know, and getting, and getting back in operation. And I, when I, when I weigh those things out, I just counsel, ring counsel, you need to weigh those things out when you do. I mean, we've got that big building down here or we can, you know, get that red, right and ready. And I'm down with that. I'm down with right and ready and let's, let's keep moving forward.
Do we know for sure, for sure the seniors would be agreeable to moving there?
They're down.
They are.
Yeah.
The seniors are down.
I'm a member of that committee and we have discussed that at length and, and they're, they're ready. They, uh, no longer meets their needs, that building. This is too cost prohibitive for them where they're at right now.
Because Linda's a closer. That's what she does.
Well.
But whatever we end up doing, I, I think the seniors in our community deserve a nice facility and I'd like to maybe to explore eventually if monies were available to doing something on the, on the other end. A nice dedicated place for them. Maybe even tie it in with congregant meals. I mean, I'm envisioning the senior population exploding in the next twenty, ten, twenty years. And maybe reading, needing something really nice to retain them in this community.
Well, I.
They deserve something nice, not just being moved somewhere like a hermit crab just to make it.
And that's kind of, I feel like we're, we're trying to find just a place to put them right now, which is, doesn't make me feel good about, if they want to be there, that's one thing. But I, I, if it was me, I'd like to see us work with the developer to work through their process. If it's something that they want and want to develop, then I'll also feel better about the money that the city invested in the space as trying to get some return on that. If, if they choose not to do that and the seniors want to be in that space, then I'm one hundred percent on board with accommodating them as much as we can. But I think it's, it's a short-term location for them. Cause like you said, if that population does grow, um, that space most likely isn't going to accommodate them long-term. But I'm not a senior yet, so.
We've, we've had seniors in this community for a long time. It's been the Silver Tsunami. So I mean, no matter how much it grows, they're not going to outgrow the depot. You know, it's going to take till Jesus comes back till they outgrow the, the regular senior citizen center. It's just not going to happen. And, and I don't want any seniors to think that, don't, don't get it twisted. We're not trying to just move them out and, you know, and put them into a building. No, we're trying to move them into a better facility. Actually, it's going to be a lot better for them. It's going to be cheaper for them to run. It's going to be newer, uh, uh, things inside the facility. Thank you. My mind's, I'm having a brain fart. But, but no, I don't want anybody to even, I don't, I don't want that even thought about. It's not that we're trying to shove anybody in a corner. That's not what's going on here. And this wasn't a short-term, term thing for me. It wasn't my idea. I thought this was long-term, uh, that this was going to be the deal that we're going with and that we're going to, uh, make a move and try to make, make some money back on that other building. So.
I think whatever we do, we need to make a decision that we're going to move forward for the seniors or really going to fix it up for a restaurant. Cause this in-between limbo back and forth, I don't think does anybody any favors.
For me, to be honest with you, I'm uncomfortable with the city being a landlord, period. Uh, but if we're going to be a landlord, I just assumed we were to a, a group and we did it for free. The, I was, Shane, I, I looked, I was excited when I heard they may be interested. It's a pretty cheap way to, to fix it up. Utilize it. Uh, it'll save them, definitely save them money on utilities, which they can't afford right now. And quite honestly, I think, uh, the building that they're in has more property tax value and more chance for renovation and usage than the, than the depot does. As far as that space, uh, I, because of, I've talked to, uh, Mike O'Neal. I said, hey, Mike, uh, how would this work for BRE? He said, as long as we coordinated, we could, we would, we would be able to, you know, if they were out in the great area dancing or something like that and had some temporary banners up, we could take those down for when we had an event. It would all be scheduled. So for me, if they're, my question was, if the seniors wanted to go there, I'm ready to go. I'm ready, I'm ready to do that and let's move them in a better facility, be lower cost to them. And then we'll turn around and market that building and, and get a business.
Yeah, John, from what I understand, they're, they're pretty excited about that. The parking would be ideal for them. We've got handicap accessible. They've got the, the bathrooms that work for them.
So I'm ready to go.
I think it, it could work for them. I just, um, don't know.
So is there an action item next Monday?
I say yes.
I say yes. So we go down the panel and see, but, uh, you know, I, I mean.
Let's, let's see.
I'm, I'm a no in, until we hear from the potential developer. We, we invested the money in that building, telling people we were going to make that a restaurant. We've promoted it as that to date. Um, we have somebody who may be interested in it and I think we give them the first opportunity to say yes or no. That's, that's was the original intent. I still think we stick to that. If they come back and say, we don't have any interest, I'm one hundred percent on board with them.
I want to say this too. We didn't invest in the depot for a restaurant. We invested in the depot because we want, uh, because that was a long-term plan.
But we had, we had somebody who wanted to develop it into a restaurant.
Right, right. That's true.
We invested in it to accommodate that. And that was, that was what the money we set in the CIP aside for was. That's what we told the community we were going to do with it. Um, and we have somebody who is interested in it. So I, I feel like they, they should have first right of refusal.
Okay, I, I disagree with that. I feel like, uh, we told the community that we were going to do something with the building and not sit on it and, uh.
Would be nice though, Matt, to get that other building on the tax roll.
I a hundred percent agree.
Again, I, I just want to say this on this before because we need to decide, but the seniors like the parking, seniors like the building, the seniors are down. Linda closed the deal. So it's not, we're trying to put baby in a corner. Are, are we satisfied with that or do we still need to keep?
Well, I would probably, uh, lean towards the restaurant.
Lean in toward?
It functioning as a restaurant, if that's how we kind of geared towards it, especially if there's somebody who's actually interested.
I don't know the level of interest.
And that's my point.
I wouldn't be able to gauge that.
And again, give them a reasonable opportunity to do their due diligence and they may come back in two weeks and three weeks and say, it's not going to work.
And so, so the reason why this was on the agenda is because I was asked, you know, the timeframe, you know, where are we at with this? You know, can we move quickly? So that's the reason why I'm here talking about it. So.
Yeah, I mean.
They are hanging on by a thread. They have an anonymous donor that donates five hundred dollars a month towards their utilities. Otherwise they would not be able to sustain where they're at right now. So yeah, they're, they're ready to move.
Where are we at? I'm a move quickly guy. Do we have three move quicklys? Are you, are you?
Do you have any idea what the estimated utilities would be?
Uh, I, I talked to Annette and I think it was around two hundred a month.
And let me tell you, I was there this last.
Fifteen hundred where they're at right now and they can't make it.
I was there this last weekend. We did the food drive down there and I, uh, got a key from Mike. That heat was set on sixty-five and it was blazing in there. I mean, it, it's warm.
That black marble, really?
They could probably crank the heater down and save some bucks, to be honest with you. But I, I'm, I'm a for it. I, I, I just think it's, you know, I really don't want to be in the landlord business as far as the city goes. Uh, this is a, I feel we owe it to our senior citizens. Uh, we've already donated the spot that doesn't really work for them. This one has the potential to be much, much handier. Parking-wise, the cost-wise, and even when they have a big two, they have the Silver Singers, they can move out to the outside area and have it. There's only two trains coming in a day, but maybe the train would get lucky and get some entertainment when they come in too. And I think that having, there's, now this is not gen- gender-specific, but there's nothing more observant than a senior citizen. So having those folks in our building does nothing but help us as far as security, uh, on transits and stuff.
And it helps solve our parking pass dilemma that we were trying to figure out what to do with the parking passes for them with the new restaurants and the winery go, coming in downtown.
Just let me get that, let me get the period or the exclamation point. You're in?
I'm in.
Okay.
I will bring in an action item that will approve the authority to spend the amount that I discussed. Is there, I don't know what to put in for equipment. I have not met and talked with the seniors on what we provide them. I don't know what that means. I mean, we can bring, we put tables and chairs in there, but I don't know what other kind of accommodations that we prepare ourselves to put in there. I mean, you're not talking tens of thousands of dollars, but.
Are you talking like quick kitchen equipment?
No, well, so somewhat, I mean, but tables and chairs.
They wanted a refrigerator and a microwave possibly still.
Well, if we can repurpose what we have there now, I think we ought to repurpose it and then as time goes on, yeah.
There's a stove in there that's only a couple of years old. That would be very easily be replaced into, into the new facility. So that's what I'll do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. All right. We'll do, we'll do seven last. Who's, uh, library annual report?
You don't get to talk.
I'm sorry about that.
No.
You don't get.
You're supposed to be next, CIP next.
Number, no, we're not doing eight.
Uh, I was just.
We're not doing eight.
Hold on, I'm going to give you a break quick, Nick. Yeah, yeah, come on.
No, wait, come back. We want, we want you to.
Come on.
Nick was on a roll. He shut him down.
Sorry, man. I'm at a, because Nick's going to stick around anyways. He's not leaving early.
Rhonda's not wrong.
Okay, well, Rhonda's sticking around too. All right.
You see how long we've been. Absolutely. I love your handouts.
Hi, Rhonda, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight. I know you still have a few things to cover tonight. So I'll try to, to keep it going, um, rather quickly through things. But I always appreciate this opportunity to look back at the last year, um, at the library and to share the impact that the library's been having in the community over that last year with you. Um, we do use fiscal year, um, for this report in large part because the state library requires a rather detailed statistical report that's done on a fiscal year basis. So rather than do a fiscal year and a calendar year, um, statistics, we just do fiscal year for everything. So this will cover the last fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen. Um, so that's just through June. I will throw in a few things that, um, have been happening since the end of June, um, and some things that we have in the works right now too, that I want to make sure you're, um, you're aware of. But we'll start with some numbers, um, and kind of like Chelsea did with her, some of her numbers, I like to bring it down to what's an average day? What's a typical day at the library look like? So I took those annual numbers, divide them out by how many days were open and we get, um, some averages here. So on any given day at the library, going to have about six hundred people coming in the library, a little less. Um, if you're coming in the summer, you're going to have well over that. If you are coming on a snowy day in December, um, then you're going to have quite a few less than that. So. But the average day though, um, is that. And while people are at the library doing things, one of the main things that a lot of people do is access technology um, or get assistance with technology. And several of these numbers on here, um, relate to that. So on a typical day, we have a hundred and eighty-seven, um, sessions on our public access computers. So that's where we're providing, um, the computer for them. Um, we also have ninety-two logins to our wireless network. So people are bringing in their own device, um, and making use of the technology. Or they're borrowing one of our laptops. So four laptops a day getting borrowed at the library. It's kind of a lower number because we have limited it now to just cardholders, um, can borrow the laptops. A little better security. We do only allow them to be used in the library, but a lot of people do, um, appreciate having that access. So, um, we're happy to offer that. Public libraries are, one of their big things that we, we focus on is helping to bridge that digital divide, um, between the people. um, between the people who have computers and internet access at home, and those who don't have any of that. Um, and so you can see, there's a lot of people in our community where access is important to them. Um, so they're using pretty heavily our, um, equipment or wifi, um, on a daily basis. The other side of that is the tech support that we can offer. Um, I know we have some people who come in to use the library, um, in large part because we have staff members who are right there who can help. So, um, the help desk is located right by all the computers, um, because we get a lot of technology questions. So, one of the other, um, numbers on this part, half of the page here, from your handout, is a hundred and sixty-six questions on an average day. Now, a lot of those are, um, technology-related questions. Um, I will say that the way that we count those, um, is defined by the state library. These do not include, I think I say this every year, these do not include directional questions like where's the bathroom? We get a lot of that, but, um, so we don't, there are certain questions we do not include. Uh, we include questions where we need to consult a resource to find an answer, or we're helping someone use a resource or use equipment. So that's what these, uh, numbers reflect. Um, so, we are often helping people with things like, um, uploading a document, formatting, um, a document, printing, scanning to their email, copying, all those kinda things, faxing, it still surprises me how many people need to come in and fax, but we get several people a day who need to have access to a fax machine. Um, and then, of course, we do also get people who bring in their devices. They'll come in with their cellphone, or their laptop, or tablet, and want help with troubleshooting, or, um, help with downloading things, or streaming things, and so a lot of it relates to technology, but not everything. We still get people who, who want help researching an old building that was in Burlington, and we just recently had someone who wanted to research, um, someone who had coached in Burlington many years ago, and... So, we help people dig up those, that kinda information too, um, and more kind of traditional reference questions, um, that, um, used to be more common than they are today. Um, a few of the other numbers that you have here for our typical day at the library, um, you have a number for, um, visits to the library's website, and I always refer to the library's website as our online branch of the library. Um, it's been grown so much since I first started working here. Um, there, at that time, you know, you could go find information about the library, you could check the catalog, but there wasn't much else there. Now, twenty-four hours a day, anywhere you're at, that you have internet access, you can download books, you can download audiobooks, you can stream music and movies, um, you can access lots of different resources like our, our Chilton's Guides, where you can, um, get a car repair manual, you can research family history, there's just so much you can do. It really is like its own library branch now. Um, so, that gets a lot of use. Um, the number under that, the, um, use of the collection number, that's the total collection, and so that includes physical items that people come in and check out at the desk. Um, but it also includes downloadable items, plus what the state library refers to as successful retrieval of electronic information, and that is anytime you go in, um, and use one of the databases. So if you were to go in and research something in opposing viewpoints, or you were to go in and get online tutoring, um, all the different things that we offer through the website, those are included in there too. So over fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred and sixty uses of the total collection, and every, um, average day at the library. Now, also each day, we bring in three items, average of three items, um, through our interlibrary loan system. And really what interlibrary loan does is it expands the reach of the library, our ability to, um, fulfill people's needs almost infinitely. Um, there's very few times when people ask us for something and we can't get it for them. So, um, we will look at other libraries in the state, we will look beyond that. Um, very rarely, we've had to look beyond this country, but usually, we can track it down and we can get it for people. So, um, we're really pleased to have that service, and I do have an update later in the presentation, um, that's pretty exciting for us on interlibrary loan. Um, we also, a few of the other numbers you have up there, hold about an average of three classes or outreach sessions, um, every day. So, tonight, we have two wiggle time classes going on, and we had, um, a class earlier in the morning as well. We also have, um, staff members that go out to the schools pretty regularly, before and after school programs they've been doing over the years. Um, they go into the schools and do presentations. Um, we have an outreach program that we do now with the homeschool group, um, and so sometimes they come to us, but other times we go to them. So, there's a lot of going outside of the library's walls and present programs as well. Um, and in a given day, a hundred and two people in the community participate and are impacted by library classes and programs that we offer. Um, the bottom there, the last number I was gonna highlight today, is the meeting room uses. And, um, not only do we have the bigger rooms where we'll have groups that have larger meetings, or trainings, um, those kinda things, but the small rooms get a lot of use from people that want to have, um, a quiet space. Um, we are, we're not a quiet library, in the sense that, um, we don't go around trishing people all the time. Um, we have a lot of kids and families use the library. It's definitely different than it was years ago when you had to, to speak in whispers at the library, we don't, we aren't like that. Um, and so when people do need that quiet space, those small rooms are very popular for that. Or if they wanna have a private conversation, a meeting, those get, um, used for that. So, as I said, we have groups like Young House comes and does staff trainings in our bigger rooms, and so lots of different kinds of uses of media rooms, but again, about eighteen uses on an average day at the library. So, those are some of the numbers to give you an idea of the volume of impact the library has, um, day in and day out for people in the community. I wanna highlight a few things, on the back, the other side of the handout that I gave you for the annual report, there are some highlights for the year, and I'm not gonna go over every one of them, I'm always happy to answer questions, but, ah, see, I use Google Slides, and it just didn't quite translate, so I apologize. Um, so, our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program, um, is a, um, program that we started last year in September, September twenty-eighteen. And, um, we're really excited to be able to offer this program. It, it's a, it's a nice way to encourage people to develop early literacy skills with their children by reading to them on a regular basis. Thousand Books seems like a whole lot, but really, if you read a few books a day, um, you can do that in even two, three years. It doesn't, um, it's not that, um, unapproachable for people to do. As of last month, where we had our first graduation ceremony for kids who had finished, um, we had a hundred and ninety-one children enrolled in the program, and ten who had completed the program. Uh, well over thirty thousand books have been read and logged as part of this program. And I know I've talked a lot in the past, so I'll try to be brief about how important this is, because kids who get read to on a regular basis have a much better vocabulary than those that don't, and it's so important that they develop these early literacy skills, pre-reading skills, um, so that they're ready when they get to kindergarten to be able to learn to read. Um, kids who aren't, um, tend to fall behind, and I always quote the, the statistics about the fact that if children aren't reading at grade level by the end of third grade, they're less likely to graduate. Um, there's also a high correlation between low literacy skills and illiteracy in adulthood, and poverty, unemployment, incarceration. So literacy skills need to start early, and they have a huge impact on people's long-term quality of life. So, this is a, a fun program for families to do and encourage them, but it really has a deeper meaning.
And Rhonda, I would say it's even more important now, because parents are texting or emailing, where the child used to hear the phone conversation, the long phone conversation to someone, and they're not hearing the spoken word as much, so I think reading has even taken even a higher importance.
Yeah, and I know one of the things I've, I've read about before is that the vocabulary that we use in just our day-to-day conversations, um, isn't... You get more vocabulary words reading some of these children's books. Um, you know, we don't necessarily talk about elephants and, you know, hippopotamus, um, in a conversation, but you do in children's books all the time, so they're picking up on words like that, um, that we wouldn't get in other places, so, yeah. Um, I'm gonna hope that the rest of these do, they didn't, they looked better when we were flipping through them before the meeting, but, um, I don't have PowerPoint on my laptop anymore, so I did Google Slides, that's okay, you don't need the words. Um, I'll tell you all about them. So, one of the other highlights that's listed under enhancing learning and literacy is the fact that we received two, um, awards from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council this year. This is not the first time we've gotten awards from them, and the awards actually aren't just a nice certificate, they're stuff. Um, so, we got, have gotten lots of different things, um, like robotics kits, um, we've gotten, um, virtual, virtual reality glasses, three D, um, printing pens, um, lots and lots of different tools that we can use with kids. We actually have two really nice Craftsman tool chests now, because we get those for storing all of these. Um, things like sewing machines, though, too, and, um, we just did recently one where they have these cutters you can use that are safe for even little kids, um, to cut cob- cardboard and build with it, there's connectors, it's all sorts of great stuff where kids can be doing hands-on work that falls into the science, technology, engineering, and math skills. And one of these new ones that we got is specifically geared towards math, and we're just getting the stuff from that, um, now. Um, actually, I guess that's the one we received in the current fiscal year, but, so I'll know more about it next time we do an annual report. But, um, we're gonna be incorporating, incorporating a lot more of that math, um, into it. And actually, our staff member who's been really big in, in applying for these awards, just got asked to be on the board. Um, so, she has been recognized in the state as being somebody who is really active, um, with STEM and with doing programs with kids, so. I did also include a picture up here of our weaving wall, so not all STEM things are high-tech kind of stuff, like the robotics and the virtual reality glasses we use with the teens. Um, this was something that we got through a grant from the Burlington Fine Arts League, and so it's a more low-tech activity for kids, um, to do, but still falls into those kinda making things. So, um, this one is a picture for you of the monthly classes that we now have that explore local history through historic newspapers. And, um, this called, that's yesterday's news, we started that up. You know, we talk a lot about our kids' classes, um, but at the same time, there's a lot of adults who want to get together and learn and socialize, um, and have these opportunities. I had a woman who told me that, um, she retired to Burlington, and how much she valued the fact that she had these opportunities like this program, um, where people could get together and talk, but also our First Friday series that's been going on for over ten years now, um, that gets a lot of people coming together and, um, and learning together. Just do all pictures next time and leave out the words, I guess, if I'm gonna do Google Slides. So, um, the, uh, other section that I have in there for highlights is on building community, and one of the things that, it's our nut-first goal in our, um, our strategic plan, is reducing barriers to access. So, um, we did several things in this last fiscal year with that. One thing we've had for a little while now is payment plans, um, and so our payment plan allows people to continue checking out even if they have a fee, a larger fee on their account. We limit the number of items they can check out, um, and, um, we help them to keep using the library during that time, though, as they're working it down. One of the things we did for the first time, um, last year, in January, we did, we called our Fresh Start Program, which allowed people to return things that maybe had been sitting around their house for a while, and they were kind of, you know, didn't wanna bring them back, 'cause they knew there'd be a fine, so we did not charge fees on those. Um, we had several users who brought things back, got their accounts back up and active, um, went onto payment plans if need be. Um, but we got a lot more of people being able to start using the library again. We also got a lot of materials back, so it was a successful initiative, and I'm glad that we were able to do that.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, I think that's a fantastic program, just because I had a book a while ago, and I had to pay for that, so. Anyways, just glad to do my part, Rhonda.
Yes, thank you. Um, another program we did last year in February was the Pay It Forward program, and with Pay It Forward, people, um, gave money that could then be used towards other people's fees. Um, and we've had people who, when they're making copies or they're paying their fee, they say, oh, keep the change. We put that into a special fund, the little can, it's a can of money. Um, and, um, so then when someone comes in and they can't take care of paying for a copy, or they can't take pair, care of paying for a fee, we're able to apply it towards those things, um, and help people get, get going again, so we appreciate that generosity. Um, we also did a Read Off Your Fines program for kids, so they can come in and read to us for a while, and we will reduce their fee, um, that, any fees that they have. One of the things that we started right towards the end of this last fiscal year was our automatic renewals. Um, so you can see that lucky day thing there, yeah, lucky you. Um, automatic renewals have been probably one of the things that we get the most feed, positive feedback on. People are loving automatic renewals. Now, it's not that it goes on forever, um, it is limited, so, um, on most things, it's two, sometimes it's three renewals you can get on an item. Um, and then at that point, it won't automatically renew anymore. Um, we also, if you were to come in and request something and someone had it out, it will not automatically renew for them. Um, so there are some limits, you can't just keep something forever, but it does mean that you don't have to be, wait, was that due two days ago? Or did I, I think I missed it, I forgot to go on and renew it. So, we offer multiple ways to renew, people can call in, they can stop in, they can go online and do it in their account through our website. Um, but this just gives them a little more peace of mind when they're checking something out, that in case they're just a few days over, they're not gonna have the fifteen cents, it's just gonna renew, they're gonna be able to keep it and finish it and bring it back when they're done with it. Um, so people have really appreciated, um, having that. One of the other side things we really weren't thinking about when we, um, initiated that, but that has happened, is that we send out a lot fewer overdue notices by mail, so we are saving on postage, um, because we don't have to be, um, be sending out little reminders as often about this.
So Rhonda, there were three ways they could do that, they could call in, stop in, or email? How do they automatically renew?
Email too, the automatic happens on its own, so, um, to renew an item, somebody can call us, they could stop in, they can go on their account on the website, they can email us too, and we'll just do it for them. Um, the automatic renewal, on the day the item is due, that night, about eleven o'clock at night, the computer system runs through and sees what's due and hasn't been renewed, and if it's a, if it's eligible to renew, it renews it.
Okay.
Um, and people get an email saying, your item has been renewed. So, you know, often, I have a book out for, you know, especially those one-week books, the new fiction books, and I'm not quite done with it, and I, you know, it's easy to forget to call in and renew. And so this just allows people, saves them the time, um, if nobody else is waiting for the item, just keep it, finish reading it, bring it back when you're done. And, um, that's been working out really well, so we're glad to be able to offer it. It was a new thing that our software company allowed us to offer, so, uh, so we looked into doing that. So, um, we also expanded options for people in terms of the online library, um, and the things that you can do. Streaming video is a new service for us through Canopy, I gave you a, excuse me, a brochure there, um, about how to use Canopy and how simple it is to do with your library card. Um, so, it's, um, a lot of documentaries, um, foreign films, world films, um, there are some titles in there that are more popular, but you're not gonna find, you know, the Disney in there. One of the things that I really love about Canopy is it has a children's section, and it explains in the brochure there for you that in the children's section, parents can set a code, so you get your child into that section, they can watch whatever they want. If they're gonna leave the kids' section, they have to put a code in, so it's a way to kinda protect, so if you sit your kid down with this, they're not going into something you don't want them to be, to be viewing, they're gonna stay in the PBS kind of content that is in, um, the kids' section, and they also just added all the Sesame Street content to Canopy too. We added newspaper archive, um, in the last year, and that has historical newspapers, so you can get the Hawkeye, it's only Iowa. Um, it's much more expensive to get the whole country, so we stuck with Iowa, but it's a nice way to access the, um, Hawkeye, the Gazette, all those historical papers that we've had here in Burlington, um, and save yourself cranking through microfilm. So, it tends to work really well, sometimes you can even get better prints than you can from the microfilm. So, um, people doing local history kind of research really appreciate having that as an option. Another option that we've added is, um, text messaging. So, notifications now, um, we've had email as a way to get a notification, now we'll text you when your item is overdue, or three days before your item is due, we also text you. So, adding that notification before the item is due has been really helpful for people too. They can decide then, oh, I do need to go on and renew, or I need to bring it back, and, um, so that's been, been a really nice service to offer. And the more that we keep moving people onto text messaging, and I try to really heavily sell this with folks, 'cause a lot of people, we have their cellphone number in their account, um, there's fewer mailers we have to put in. there's fewer mailers we have to put in the mail and it's, again, saves us that postage. So, that's been a really nice option. Again, it's our software company kind of catching up with the times and making that available. So, we were glad to be able to add that. Slightly better, but not much. So, another area that we're continuously improving is that we updated our HVAC system, so it is more efficient and effective. We also converted all of the tube and can lighting in the library to LED, which now means all the library, all of the interior lights are done, LED in the library. So, we have been investing in reducing operational costs. We're doing projects, pretty much every year, we've been doing some kind of project. Now, Nancy at Alliant said that we're mitigating the rate increases. So, we don't necessarily see our electric bill just dropping off to nothing. But we have been keeping it very steady, which wouldn't have happened if we weren't doing these projects every year. So, that's the way she likes to talk about it. So, this one looks a little better. I've got to keep the text at the top if I'm going to do Google Slides, I guess. So, ongoing things I wanted to point out. The Beyond the Book Club is in its second year, maybe going into its third year now. That's been a very successful book club for us, meets once a month. I mentioned the First Friday series, again, that's been probably over 10 years now. Every First Friday of the month, we bring someone in. We recently had someone come in and do a presentation on Ellis Island where she acted as different people who came through there. The room was packed, it was standing room only in there. We don't always get that kind of attendance, but we have a lot of regular people that come to that, you know, come every month, no matter what the topic, so they can learn there. So, lots of good things.
Did they ever tape those for people that can't get there?
No, we don't. And some of the speakers would allow it and some probably wouldn't, but it would be something to look into, maybe doing a little Facebook Live of some of them. Yeah, we have, hard to believe, next Friday is our, not this week, but next week, is actually December. So, we have our First Friday program coming around again, they seem to come really quickly.
And what's the topic?
It is a storyteller this time. So, he'll be doing kind of holiday stories, so. And we partner with Sunny Brook who brings in treats, so that's another incentive for folks to come and enjoy those programs. We've been doing farmer's market outreach for a few years now. It's a great opportunity to be out there and talk to people who don't necessarily come into the library. So, we've really enjoyed being able to do that in our pop-up libraries. Our monthly family nights, again, they're not, it wasn't new last year, but it's been relatively new, ongoing, very popular series. We just had one a couple of weeks ago on science and we had about 100 people there for it. It's on a Friday night after hours, so kids and their parents can come and do something together. And we always have fun things going on. And I also, our summer reading has been such a popular thing for many, many years. And you can see, we get a lot of wonderful support from the community through sponsorships to make that possible. I mentioned the school outreach, we do a lot of that. We've added recently our teen book clubs. This one was our father-son book club. We've had a mother-daughter, we've had a mother-son one coming up. Actually, that one's tonight, the mother-son one is tomorrow night, excuse me, tomorrow night. So, we've been doing different combinations like that, but for family and kids to be able to come together and read together, they do different projects and things too. Our outreach preschool storytimes have been very successful. We've been doing those for several years. This year, this current fiscal year, the Murray Foundation fully funded that. We go to 35 preschools every month, preschool classes, and reach over 500 children doing that. So, that's been a wonderful thing too. Chess nights, we've been able to, we have, someone comes in every month and does a chess night. And we just recently added Saturdays, the first and third Saturdays of the month, we have an adult chess program. So, people can come in and play chess those mornings at the library. So, glad to have added that. And it was a community member who saw our evening one we did for kids and said, "I want to do that for adults." So, he's kind of taken the lead and helped us with that. And I mentioned the homeschool outreach that we've done also. In terms of our online library, a few other newer things for us. I gave you a brochure there for Freegal as well, that is streaming music. So, streaming is, you know, a popular way to do things. You can also download with Freegal too. So, if you have your library card, you can get that music. A few of the other new things though is the free homework help. We've had tutor.com for several years. We switched to Brainfuse Help now, so we still offer free tutoring, but, online tutoring for people, but it's a different company than we used before. And part of that's because the state library started giving us access to Brainfuse. Brainfuse VetNow and JobNow, we get through the state library.
Brainfuse?
Brainfuse, that's the name of the company. And the Jobs Pro One and the VetNow one actually goes with some of these jobs things as well. But, you can submit a resume and someone on the other end looks at it and gives you feedback on it. There's all sorts of different tools available to help. And there's also with the VetNow, how to navigate different benefits and things that are available. So, there's several things through both of those. The Foundation Directory Online, we just got through the state library as well. And so, for community organizations that are looking for grants, it's a really good resource for that. I included Bridges, we've had it for quite some time, for eBooks and audiobooks. They've added magazines and video as well. So, just another type of material you can get through that. Bridges is a statewide consortium for getting materials online in Iowa. RB Digital, that's the big RB there, has incorporated Zineo into it. Zineo is magazines that you can download, so you now would go through RB Digital for that. But that is one that we've been offering for a little while, but they've had this change. So, it is still available. But lots of things through our library's website that you can do. And then, I want to just briefly talk about a few new things. So, I mentioned interlibrary loan, we're super excited. The state library is offering a statewide courier service to every public library in the state. And the way, reason why we're excited about that is because that is going to significantly reduce our postage expense for doing interlibrary loan. We've always, you know, we can get, we send things out to other libraries, we receive them, but we have to return them, so we have to pay the postage to return them. We no longer, if we're sending or receiving within Iowa, have any expense because the state library is taking that on. So, I don't know how that's going to impact those expenses yet because it just started last week. So, we got our first delivery this week. Last week, they just brought us the bags and totes and... But the other way that it helps us is process improvement because we used to have to package things in mailing envelopes and tape it all up or we'd have boxes of things we had to tape all up. Now, it's zipper bags that they provide, we throw it in, we zip it up, we send it. Real easy way for printing off the label that goes with it. So, it's a much smoother process, so I think we're going to save some staff headache that way, plus save on postage. So, really glad the state library got that going. I will say, I had a group from Macomb Public Library, some staff members came and asked to do a tour of our library. And I was going around talking about interlibrary loan. I said, "Oh, we're so excited, we're about to get a statewide courier system." And they're like, "Oh, you didn't already have that?" So, Illinois has had this for a long time. They're set up differently there, they have bigger systems and everything. So, kind of burst my bubble a little bit, so I was so excited. But, I'm still very excited about it and I'm glad we're catching up with Illinois and offering this service. I do think we will see an increase in interlibrary loan use. Even before this service, last month, in October, our interlibrary loan use was up by 33% from the previous October. I don't know what, how's that bubble? But it was up and we've been seeing several months that are up. I think now that every library in the state has the courier access, I think we're going to be seeing an increase in opening that up, that service to customers, so.
And I use that service and I am behind this desk up here. When I was running for office, Rhonda ordered an interlibrary book for me, so thank you.
Oh, we are happy to do it. It really does open up the world of possibilities to people in Burlington. You know, we're not limited just what we have in our public library, we can get things from anywhere. Sometimes people ask me about how do we choose whether to buy or to get through interlibrary loan? And we tend to look at how current is it, how much does it cost? And how many people are going to be interested in that? So, the nice thing is with interlibrary loan, even if we think you are the only person in Burlington who's ever going to want to read that, we can still get it for you. If we thought that, we might not, we're probably not going to buy it for the collection. But we can get even the most obscure things in for people. So, we're really happy to offer that service. LED conversion of our parking lot lights just finished today. So, you'll still see, I think the bucket truck is still there, but I believe they are completely finished. It's much better light quality than it was, better coverage. It was real happy Friday when I came out at the end of the day and saw how nice it looked on the staff level and today they're back and did the upper level as well.
Cool, nice.
So, that pretty much wraps up all of our LED conversion at the library. Another program that we're working on right now, I have the bags ready to go, is Books on the Bus. So, we saw another community that did this and I talked to Nick and we said, "Yeah, let's try this." And so, I've been working with Amy, the bus. And so, we will have bags, one more of adult books, one kids' books on the city buses. Our Friends the Library thought it was a great idea, so they're providing books.
For them to read while they're on the bus?
Yeah, so they can pick up books. It's kind of like the little free library concept. So, the idea is, we know some of these books are going to get taken and they're not going to come back at all, that's fine. But people can take a book and read it just while they're on the bus, take it with them and finish it, bring it back, bring their own book and throw it in there, whatever we want with that. So, it's sort of a take-one, leave-one model. And the Friends the Library are happy to continue to supply donated books as we need to replenish. So, we're going to give it a try and we'll see how that goes. The library that we read about in bus in another community, we're really happy with how it was going. So, we thought we would partner and try that. But particularly for kids in the morning and the afternoon when they might have a little bit of a long bus ride, they can pick something out of the bag and read. We also have new self-checkout stations ordered, they're coming in January, so we're looking forward to that. Our new toddler center is coming soon. If you come to the library, we just today, we're working on moving bins around. We're getting new bins for the toddler books and creating a whole section that's geared towards toddlers with some activities and things like that too. We're moving all the bins out to create a bigger play area, that creative play space that we have in front of the Storytime Room. I know they said Saturday, the last two hours, it was standing room only. There's like so many people over there trying to play with the train table or the kids are trying to do, you know, all the other activities we have over there. So, we're shifting some things around to make more space. And the toddler center is being funded by a grant from Alliant Foundation, a private donation, and then also the Libraries Foundation. So, we're getting those bins made by Iowa Prison Industries, so those should be in at the end of the year. Create Space Remodel, we've been working on. We've been using the space this way for a bit, but we're really excited to be moving forward and getting it remodeled. It's our old coffee shop. And so, we are going to be using that as a place, people can reserve and do meetings in there, kind of a meeting overflow room. But the main thing that we'll be doing with it is more hands-on activities and classes. So, we just last Friday had a cake decorating class in there. So, we're looking at doing different things like that that are hands-on, maybe a little messy versus our big meeting rooms that have nice carpeting and, you know, we may not want to do some of those messier things in there. So, we're working on converting that space over and finding new uses for that. And before I wrap up, I do want to put in another plug for the community Thanksgiving dinner. I know you guys have been plugging that. I talked to Lois Blythe today and she said, "Fruit pies and cookies." They need fruit pies and cookies on Wednesday and so she's really hoping we can get more. We have a cart with a big turkey on it at the library to collect canned goods. Tomorrow's, they're hoping to get all of those in. If you brought some Wednesday morning, Lois could still get them over there. So, and if people need any other information about how to get meals delivered to them, they still want to sign up and volunteer, they said, the cleanup crew, always a hard one to get people for, delivery people because they, you know, a lot of people might want to have those delivered, especially if the weather's not great. And then, they also need people to help in the kitchen during the event, so.
Now, on these, just curious on the pie and cookie donation, these aren't literal pies, right?
Yeah, they need, they need people to donate fruit pies and bring those to the high school on Wednesday.
You can take your tupperware there, it's fine.
Yeah, or cookies, they're opening up to cookies this year.
That people purchase, not people, you're not taking homemade?
I think they'll do homemade as well. Yeah.
Me and my little girls, every year, we go there, first thing in the morning and we cut those pies and put them on the plates.
I figured with all the, you know, everybody's allergic to everything, you'd need professionals doing that stuff.
Yeah, no, they still are taking homemade pies, so. And then, also, we are a spot where you can drop off for Toys for Tots as well. So, our box is getting close to being full and they will empty it and we can keep refilling it. So, I just wanted to put in a plug for both of those things that we're doing at the library right now. And I couldn't not put in a plug for our Friends the Library. They have their books there after Thanksgiving book sale. So, if you don't want to Black Friday shop at the malls, it's a little too chaotic for you, come on down and buy a book at the library. So, they're doing a book sale Friday, Saturday, and the following Monday.
And I understand that that's open to the public?
It is, yes, all three days open to the public. And, you know, everything that they raise comes back. So, any event you go to where they're serving food or there's a speaker, the Friends the Library have had a hand in making that possible. So, we wouldn't have those three programs a day, 102 people being impacted if we didn't have the Friends behind us. So, happy to give them my final slide and plug today. So, do you have any other questions that I can answer?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is that it? Is that all you do?
It's hard to pare it down to what to tell you.
Shane had a question, Rhonda. He wanted to know if there was an age restraint on the wiggle time.
Oh.
Actually, I'm reading for wiggle time.
I was going to say, I think you've come and read a lot of times in December, don't you? Are you doing that again?
Yeah, and they like me a lot better than Jim. Hey, I don't have a question. I just want to say that in 2012, we came to a lot of the department heads and we said, "Hey, we need you guys to start looking for savings." And I just want to applaud you that every year you come with, you know, whether you're still trying to get something done because lord knows you're all in on the library. But, you know, I still like even your presentations, it's still, you're still looking for areas to conserve and save. And I just want to say, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good job.
For real.
That's worth a golf clap, friends. Bunch of types coming up, act like you mean it.
Bunch of time.
Act like you mean it.
Anything else you have questions on? Well, feel free to stop down anytime, there's so much more I could show you and tell you about, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Okay, Nick McGregor.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Nick.
I didn't mistake and let the senior engineer who is colorblind select the colors.
Isn't that fun? Again. So, which color matches which?
Good evening, once again. We'll be talking the five-year road plan to discuss what will we be doing for the next couple of years for roadwork. If you could hit the next slide for me. So, the five-year road plan, every year, we review the roadway conditions and give you an idea on what kind of roadwork we'll be looking at over the next five years. If you could hit the next slide. I don't, I mean, that's right here. Guess I can use that puppy.
Thought he was gone.
So, this is a map on the slide of the city's streets PCI, which is pavement condition index. It's a scale from zero to 100, 100 being perfect. And you can see the scale here, we have a fair amount of roadways that are in the lower category, but we also have quite a few roads that are in pretty good shape. And so, we use PCI as a part of our analysis to understand what kind of roadway work we should be doing. So, it's a bell curve of PCI. You can take the same curve and you apply it to most roadways across anywhere, mostly the Midwest. And it would be ring true of what the roadway conditions are, what kind of shape they're in. And so, this is a summary of what type of roadway surfaces we have. We have HMA, which is hot-mix asphalt. We have PCC, which is commonly produced concrete. And then, we have Seal Coat, which is an oil and gravel mix that ends up looking a lot like asphalt after the gravel works in. We actually had some Seal Coat that got done this fall and that was a big complaint that we heard, that it was just a gravel road. But, give it a little time and those roadways tend to work their way out and they look fairly similar to asphalt. So, the five-year road plan, which I handed a copy out, you'll notice that I only have four years on there. We'll discuss the fifth year. There were several options and there was a lot of dollars being spent as the option, so I wanted to kind of go through that. Let's just jump in, I'm going to go into a year-by-year breakdown of what we'd like to do. For fiscal year '21, which starts even next summer, we spend that money. For fiscal year '21, which is, starts even next summer, we spend that money. Central is one of the biggest road projects that we have on there. I know that this is one that gets brought up a lot, or we receive complaints about a lot. It's been in the road plan for the last, ever since I've been here, but it's just getting to that date to be able to do that. It is a planned HMA overlay, so they'll go in there and mill off the first two inches, and then replace it with new asphalt and patch where necessary. The brown, I just did this for a, for a grouping of roadways that would add up to give an understanding. This is the rest of the roadways in the North Hill area. As you remember, we awarded contract to WL Miller this year, and they started some of the roadways. But this is kind of some of the other ones that are in fairly poor condition to try and get those on. We've actually spoken with the contractor to see if they would, would be willing to give us the same unit pricing on these rest of the roadways, and they were. So, we may be coming back to you here in the next couple of months and talking about a, kind of a change order, since we've bid it out within the recent, I think we can get away with avoiding the bidding rules. And then, the last one on there is West Avenue and Gear Avenue Dalbar retrofit. I'll get into what that project is, and maybe I'll explain the rationale on why we've chosen this project for next year. I guess I should be flipping through my slideshow. This is the extent of what we have Central Avenue planned for, so it's from, I think it's by Angular, well, it's north of Angular, it's Maple. Maple all the way down to Harrison, and it's fairly wide roadway, but we'll be able to get it down for 650-some thousand. So, this is the asphalt projects that I was referring to. It is, the, the green is what we have had bid out and was being worked on, and then the remaining sections is what we'll be able to get done next year. And then, the Dalbar retrofit. So, so what is this project, and why, why is it on there? If you drive on West Avenue, you'll notice there's kind of a hippity-skipity. I don't know how else to describe it. As you drive, with a certain wheelbase car, you really notice it more than others.
What'd you call that?
I called it hippity-skipity. I don't think that that's a technical term.
Sounds like a kid's game. That sounds fun.
But you'll notice quite a bit, quite a bit of shimmy in when you're, when you're driving. Not only is it rough riding, but long-term, those panels will begin to break. And so, the, the plan fixed to try and save us from a roadway project in the future that involves full replacement is a Dalbar retrofit. You can see that image off to the right-hand side. I think the more relatable-type project that you maybe have driven on is as you come in to the east side of Des Moines through Pleasant Hill, you'll notice in some of those areas, they did a Dalbar retrofit. And so, what you do is you go in there, and you cut in between the two panels, and you put new Dalbars in there, and then you do a diamond grind on top of it and smooth it out. And so, the Dalbars will save the panels from kind of rocking and then breaking in half.
Because some of those panels, I mean, well, most of them are in good shape, but they're already skipping some.
And that's, that's the rationale, is why we, we suggested this project, is because the concrete is in fairly good condition. It's just the joints and the way those panels operate while driving.
Are you saying they're moving? Is that why you've got that?
A little bit, yes, but I, I think some of it's also the way they were poured, too. We did speak with West Burlington. As you may have noticed, that same condition continues up gear to, about agencies. The outside lanes are a little bit newer, they don't have that same issue. They are interested in doing a project to try and get a little bit better pricing. We, we looked at, we used a SUDAS specification number to try and get the estimate on what that costs. We don't know anybody necessarily in the area that does that type of work, but most of your concrete contractors should be able to understand, you know, based on the plans to try and do that. So, that's the rationale as to the reason why this roadway's on there, is we're trying to preserve it for the future, and I think it makes a lot of sense now versus reconstructing it in 10 years.
Hippity-skipity, man. You get that hippity-skipity out of there, it's going to make a lot of friends around here.
Sometimes you never know what's going to come out of my mouth. It makes life interesting. So, fiscal year '22, Harrison Street project was actually a planned project for this last summer, but based on, we did some core samples, so it's an asphalt overlay over old concrete. When we did the core sample, the concrete underneath of it was powder, and we knew that an asphalt overlay was not the right move. It would be money not well-spent. And as we started to think about, well, let's think about what this costs for reconstruction. It's a little bit more than what a overlay would be, and so, we started, what does that mean? You start removing all the concrete, you start exposing the ground. We need to separate sewers in this area. I wish I could show you a map. It's kind of confusing. We have combined sewers still in this area. So, Jesse and I spoke, and we have an estimate. We actually put out an RFP, engineering-wise, on doing a sewer separation and a full-depth reconstruction project on this. And it includes some of Miller and Dunham. We've spoken to the school district. It would take storm sewer to the south, whereas now, it goes in the intakes into the combined sewer and goes north, and using a retention area in kind of the wooded area behind or to the east of James Madison. And so, this project is at $4.8 million estimate cost, which is significantly more than what just a reconstruction project would be. However, I feel like we would be remiss in not doing the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer, or separating the sewers, rather, in that area while you're there and have the ground exposed, because that, that is a lot of the cost when you're doing sewer separation, is the pavement replacement, plus concrete and a good base will, will keep this roadway in fairly good shape for, for some time. So, as Jim and I spoke with Travis today, that was one of the things we talked about, was the GO bonding capability for fiscal year '22. I need to change my slideshow based on today's conversation. Main Street, the Tiger Grant, is a funded project through the Tiger Grant, but I just wanted to put that on there to indicate that that roadway work will occur in that year. Also, based on today's conversation and the conversation I had with Leo last Friday, there is some sewer separation work in this area that should occur with the work that's being done. That is something that we hadn't budgeted for, but it's about estimated $1.3 million in sewer separation work. I don't know if you've discussed, I left that before then, on where we would come up with that funding source to do that type of work.
So, one of the major problems that we have on the sewer side is how do we keep within 3% rate increases and do the work that needs done? This is, this, we, the project he's mentioning with the sewer, the CSO separation, trying to do in advance of Tiger, we looked at the feasibility of using TIF funds to cover. And you have a separate piece, yet another component, which is that force main in that same area, that if we're going to go in and do tear up, we might, we should get that done as well. And that's, and we were looking at TIF potentially on that, too. So, the one is a $2 million project, and the other is $1.3 million?
Correct.
So, just trying to plan out, how do we get these done and do the projects in the right order, so you don't tear up things after you've done something?
And, and when I met with Leo last week, the benefit in separating some of that storm sewer that you would see immediately should we have any flooding, is that you would be able to put a valve against the Market Street system, so you wouldn't have the backup from the river. It would be a one-way valve, so that could alleviate some headaches on, on division. I mean, it's not the only reason to do it. Per consent order, right now, we're required to do that, and that's work that we wouldn't have to do in the future. Washington Street, as we've kind of spoken about, has, was originally, when the city of Burlington applied for, STP back in the day, STBG, DOT acronyms for grant funding. We have $867,000 in grant funding for this roadway as just a mill-and-fill project. However, I think when we're doing the Tiger Grant work, that we could really benefit from replicating the same imagery and function with some of the storm sewer pavers that have a consent order, an integrated plan, benefit to take care of some of that work. And I just got that estimate back today. That's $5.2 million worth of work. We have $867,000 in grant, so I mean, that brings down our TIF obligation into the four-and-a-half bracket.
This was, we had budgeted this in a CIP. As our, our match being done with TIF funds already, this would increase how much was done. And this is another one of the projects that we were talking with Travis about, can we make this work and fit it in?
And so, I have it incorrectly in this fiscal year. From a coordination aspect, with Main Street and Jefferson Street being tore up in fiscal year '22 and '23, having a third roadway in the downtown for that full extent doesn't make a lot of sense. So, I would actually kick this roadway project to fiscal year '24.
Which is calendar '23.
Calendar, calendar year '23. If that makes sense.
Yeah, work doesn't get done until '24.
All right. And this is an idea of what, for some reason, I don't like to, I'm basing everything off of what I know. I didn't go through the slideshow. This is kind of what that project limits would look like. As you can see, kind of the retention area, it wouldn't be a square like that, but that's just giving you the idea where it would be. And the extent of that Harrison Street project is from summer all the way to, to Main Street.
And over on summer, you're, you're
Taking the hump out. And so, that would reconstruct that intersection, so you could take the, the Dukes of Hazzard.
Right, right.
When I was in the car business, I loved that.
That's the extent of the, what we have for Washington Street. Washington Street is from front all the way to the bridge deck on Central. And then, this is not the right, oh, I'm in fiscal year '23, just jumped right to it. Fiscal year '23 is the Jefferson Street section of the Tiger Grant. I wanted to give that indication on, on there. The other planned project during that duration is the Madison Ninth Street project, for which we've accepted the $376,000 in STBG grant funding. The remaining portion of that, which is about 1.5 million of general obligation funds, we're using to match that project. So, those will be the two projects for that fiscal year. Fiscal year '24, as you may remember, we got good news that we were, we received the full 80% funding on Agency Street to do full-depth reconstruction from the extent limit that we finished on that eastern portion, all the way to Curran, four lanes wide. I think it includes the sidewalk on the one portion where the existing school used to be. And then, we have Terrace, Johansson, and Hagaman as HMA overlay projects. Terrace isn't in terrible condition from a structure standpoint. We'll have to do some patching, and neither is Johansson. I think they're pretty good candidates for an HMA overlay.
Because Hagaman is from, from West Avenue to?
Down to Mason. And so, that, so Terrace and Johansson are overlay projects. They're concrete right now, so you wouldn't have to mill. Hagaman is currently HMA, so you'd have to mill it and then put the new asphalt down. But with, with those projects, with the grant funding, we're, we're able to do quite a bit of work that year. And also, that would be the same fiscal year that we would have Washington Street as a project. So, fiscal year '25, which would be calendar year '24, we started discussing, you know, right now is the time of year where we think about STBG grant applications. So, those are due the end of December. The reason, the importance of trying to get the five-year road plan down is so that I can have concurrence on what kind of project we need to prepare ourselves for to try and submit a grant application, to try and get some funding. And so, when you look at a grant application like that, you need a roadway that has a fair amount of traffic value, that is in pretty poor condition, and, and needs to have some work done. And so, when we started talking, Sunnyside was one of the roads that came to mind. You'll notice in section, Sunnyside, between 61 and Osborne, the eastern portion and the western portion are probably the two, the west portion is the worst. Over by Aldo Leopold School is probably the worst section of that. However, in the middle, there are sections that, in five years from now, will progressively get worse. And then, we also, Jesse and I, talked about summer, south of Harrison, especially around the airport area, because it has no curb, the outsides start to fall and crumble away because you need to keep that, that pressure to lock it in. And so, we developed some estimates based on those types of things. STBG grants, there's about a million, a little over a million dollars available every year. And so, to try and get more than that, you know, there's an 80/20 match, we would never be able to exceed that dollar-figure request because there's just, it simply isn't there. Sunnyside, for the full depth of it, from, from Roosevelt all the way to Osborne, including storm sewer, I think that's our biggest downfall on Sunnyside, is there isn't a lot of storm sewer network in there, and so, it sits for longer, which causes for, for more degradation, is $5.2 million. That's a fairly significant number, but it's also a significant amount of work. It would be a full-depth reconstruction, so you have a roadway that'll be good for, for 40 to 50 years.
Hey, Nick.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This always bothered me. When we redid Sunnyside last time, there was nothing for a bike trail. I know there's not a lot of real estate to work with, but there is, is there any way we could start thinking? We've got the two schools there. To me, it really makes sense for a community to have a bike trail on Sunnyside.
Certain sections of Sunnyside would be very accommodating to something like that, especially the western portion. You have quite a bit of right-of-way in that area, and you could probably accomplish that as it gets tighter to the east, as it curves, it gets a little bit more difficult to try and create that trail.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so, it's kind of the reason why we didn't, I mean, we didn't, we didn't estimate any sort of trail work in this, but we did talk about kind of widening some of it, so you could get a center turn lane in there with all the driveways, and there are quite a few avenues going off of Sunnyside. We thought, Jesse and I thought it would be pretty, it would be worthwhile to invest in a third lane for a center turn lane. I don't know where you fit a trail into some of that. I think that there, there is some, there's a lot of traffic that moves westerly towards Aldo Leopold, and then even Aldo, or Sunnyside Elementary. But I, I don't know where you, how that fits in.
And now that they've got the bike trails at Stars Cave, I just think it makes sense. Let's start connecting some of these up. So, if we added some trail on Sunnyside, it could break off and then head down and hit.
It could definitely make sense going down to Irish Ridge, and that it could.
I'd be curious to see what the figures, I know it's going to come out high. I'd just be curious.
Yeah.
To start linking some of it up.
I think, I think the, the trick isn't necessarily the width of the, the trail for that extent. It's the driveways that get tricky, because when you go after these type of grant dollars, you have to meet slope modifications to the driveway, and as you do that, you end up into their driveway, which, that ends up being more concrete work than the actual trail itself is the driveway modifications. So, I could, we could probably throw an estimate together on what that would be.
I'd just be curious.
It might be difficult, but I, we could probably come up with a dollar figure.
Okay.
Summer is actually one that we
I think it would make moving to Burlington much more appealing if we had bike trails with some of our, more of our elementary schools and our middle schools and connect it up with Stars Cave, a recreational center.
Summer is one that we did talk about because of its close proximity to some of the existing work that we've done and the way that you could get to the parks. And there, we do have plenty of area where you could put a trail without having any other disruption, I guess I would say, with existing utilities or driveways. As you can see, the, the PCC version of that is $1.8 million. If you were to add a trail alongside of that, from, I'll say Harrison Street south to some way to get a cross over to the east, you're, you're probably spending a 400 to a half million dollars more than what's on that page. But you do have grant opportunity, and I know that
And when you say it's going to last 40 to 50 years, I'm like, the community doesn't want to wait 40 to 50 years to connect up Sunnyside with Stars Cave. So, I would like to see some cost figures on it.
So, I lean more towards Sunnyside from a structure standpoint. I think that there are work, there's work on summer that we can do patching-wise, and you could, you could mill and fill that project relatively easy. Unfortunately, on Sunnyside, I don't think that that is necessarily a candidate. We've already seen what that's done. You know, it's lasted about eight to 10 years is the last time that that project was done. And now, you're starting to see that asphalt turnover because of the base that's underneath there. So, as much as I want to be able to, I want to try and use you guys as a sounding board on what you think the direction that we should head for that fifth year, and also, what type of grant application we should be submitting. So, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this fifth year and/or So I'd like to hear your thoughts on this fifth year and/or-
Well, and I-
From a money talk standpoint.
From, the Sunnyside also includes stormwater work. I, I, maybe I missed what you said that-
No, you, you're correct. I added, I put the million dollars in there for storm sewer work just because of the difficulty that it's gonna be to get through there.
Uh, right now, and, right now with the, the way that drains on the surface and getting that into a good s- storm sewer system would be, there's a major benefit to that. One, uh, you, you don't have Cascade up here, Cascade Bridge up here.
I don't.
Um, and it, we talked with Travis about trying to put it in, and, I mean, and it's one that we're gonna have as part of the CIP for you to take a look at, but it's, you're, you're gonna end up in a position of making some, the only way to fit, fit all of these is to push some out. And so you're gonna have to make some decisions about what's your order of priority with some of this, because that fi- five point three million here, Cascade at six million, and I don't think when I was talking to Travis that I was, that we were talking about the project you have in FY twenty-four, the two million of it, or one and a half million of expenditures there that, that we weren't accounting for when we were thinking about where we could try to fit Cascade Bridge in. Something's gonna have to give. Um, but they're, and they're all projects that, that need done, it's just, how do you prioritize and where do you make them happen?
I do have something for you. What you, we have thought about Cascade Bridge as a project, and where does it fit into the scope of things? We, we have a project with the Mississippi Sewer Interceptor. I think I've described it in the past. It's the sewer line that dives over the edge and goes underneath the river. Huge environmental liability that we want to try and replace. To reroute that, we need to go down Main Street to take it to probably the South Street lift station till you can get it to the wastewater treatment plant. And so that would mean a lot of pavement disruption. Um, Main Street's pavement isn't in the greatest shape, um, especially south of Harrison is in quite poor shape. The thing that we've discussed is, is submitting Old Tiger, it's called Build Grant now. A build grant, not connecting it to the existing Tiger Grant, but connecting the idea of a main thoroughfare, including Cascade Bridge. Trying to leverage the dollars that we would be spending on the Mississippi Sewer Interceptor and the pavement replacement to try and get that full corridor as an area of impact. I don't know the likelihood of a build grant landing. And I know that there are desires for Cascade to be replaced. I just, I wanted to throw that out there. We're not not thinking about it, it's just, how do you fit it in the context with the, with the infrastructure that you're trying to replace? And I think that a bill grant with that pairing of the Mississippi Sewer Interceptor could make a lot of sense, and-
It's definitely worth pursuing.
But wouldn't come about for, till when?
That's a good question.
It'd be after the existing Tiger, so we're talking-
Yeah, I mean, you're after twenty-tw- twenty-twenty-three anyway, and by the time you close out Tiger, you're probably, you, you have to monitor performance stuff until twenty-four, twenty-five, somewhere in there. So, I mean, you're talking probably past the existence of our current five-year road plan. And I know that there is a desire to replace it as quickly as possible. However, if we can leverage those type of funds, I think it could make a lot of sense-
Save money.
For the community to try and get that type of work done. So it's just, I just wanted to put that out there from something to think about.
I heard Travis foreshadowing. He said, "If there were a bridge project." I heard that in his speech today.
All right.
So is there a general direction on fiscal year twenty-five? Is there a, is, do you see the one road or the other being a, a stronger contender as far as a grant? Is there something that, just want to hear from you, what your thoughts are on it?
I, I think I would agree with you. Replacing Sunnyside as a whole, I consider it to be one of the five, what I call east-west streets in our community, primary east-west streets. We have to make sure that there's access there. Um, that road is, is relied upon heavily by a number of residents, almost the entire north side of our community relies on that road regularly. So, um, I agree with you that Sunnyside can pro- or, Sunnyside, Summer Street could probably get patched in over time. Eventually, it'll need to be replaced, uh, but, uh, I, I would lean towards the Sunnyside project.
We're gonna be gone, but, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You go next.
Um, as far as with Summer and the fact that it doesn't have curbs and it's like crumbling off on the, on the edges, how, because I mean, that can really just go, you know, as far as-
We, we monitor, we do put patch rock along the side of it to try and keep pressuring on it. And we do do hack, we have hot mix asphalt, and the edges are gonna be easier to replace than, where you have reflective joints. I think that the, the full depth of it is in fairly good shape. It's just some of the edges are starting to bleed out.
Okay.
I also think that it's a good opportunity to plan with the county for an out year to do a, a combined project, because at about the animal clinic going south, Summer Street becomes a county road. Um, and it's asphalt all the way till it hits Madison.
So you would be a proponent of waiting until they're ready to go and then just do an overlay?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you can get a bit, you can get a bigger quantity project, you get better pricing.
I'm not gonna be here, I'm just gonna go speak minds that, uh, yeah, um, somebody else have to make that decision, but I had already looked at that and I, I did send, uh, I appreciate Jim, appreciate you getting back on me on that, uh, email. When I said, "Sunnyside," I didn't think of what it was, but yeah. But I'm a, I'm a Summer man, and I'm not, I'm definitely not all Sunnyside. I think that's too aggressive. Um, I just think there's too many other things that, that could possibly come up and that we could do. And I, I, I think Sunnyside to Irish Ridge possibly, and I'm, and I'm definitely all in on the Summer, like it matters, but I just, I do. I think all Sunnyside is, you're getting a little too aggressive, um, especially with some other things that we got coming down the road.
When we say a Sunnyside to Irish Ridge, are we talking from the, from the east or the west?
Uh, sixty-one.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't put the context on there. I, I want, I wanted to give you kind of an idea on what that cost is. I also think that the western section, unfortunately, the more recent section is in probably the worst shape.
That's the east side, right?
We've also discussed internally about the, the current school setup and the way they have their intersection kind of laid out with the push-button stop. I think that it could be a very good candidate to do kind of a four-way lighted stop at Diamond Ridge and the easternmost driveway and move the push-button stop to that. You know, I know during the school let-out and start hours that they were having some difficulty getting the buses out on the Sunnyside because of how busy it is. However, that's an added expense that's not in there. I mean, we have some existing lights that you could probably repurpose, but there's programming installation. I mean, you're, you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars to, to make that intersection change.
I mean, it's, it's a tough call. I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert. You are, that's why we hired you. Uh, but Sunnyside has two schools on it. Uh, it's gonna get a lot more traffic. We're, we're doing, uh, Madison and Central, and so Summer might have to wait. If you're asking me which, if it's either or, uh, I would be more inclined to do the Sunnyside and the, the, the big project, because it also satisfies sewer problems, so if you're looking for a direction.
I was talking to a recruiter for GE recently, and he said families are looking for communities that, that have bike trails. So I would be for the Sunnyside, and I would be curious in seeing if we could get some grants and actually put some trail system in there.
Okay, so I will, I will lean towards what I heard as Sunnyside, and I will prepare an STBG grant application for the full, the full length of it. Is that a dollar figure?
And it's hard not to be biased to want to do Summer, because I use Summer regularly. I have to remove myself from that and say that Sunnyside is gonna be probably a necessary project.
That's the majority, my friend.
Okay, well, we will, we'll, I will be, bring an action item next week to approve officially, a resolution to approve the five-year road plan. I will replace the, so Washington Street to fiscal year twenty-four, and then I will add Sunnyside as the project. And I'll present it to you that way as a resolution. And then I, we will also be preparing an STBG grant application that you'll see here coming towards the end of December here in a month, so we'll get that on the agenda here, so.
Right on.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, uh, this last one's on, uh, me, with the number seven, city council salary. Um, I brought that up. I feel like, uh, the job has evolved just from the time that I first started in two thousand twelve. I went over the hours that it takes, uh, for, for a mediocre or even a absentee council member. And you can't get away from, there's no way you can get by with less than twenty-five hours, twenty-five hours a week. The reason, another reason why I brought it up, just let me lay it all out there, is because I think you're really, I think we're limiting ourselves on who gets to, or who, who gets to, uh, who can come after a job on the city council, who can make a difference in the community. Unless you have a whole lot of money, or you own your own business, or you're willing to make that sort of sacrifice financially, then there's just no opportunity for anybody else to do it. Anybody that has a full-time job, there's just no way. There's just no way that they could do that without making, without compromising either in their job or compromising on the council. So I wanted to look at this. I wanted the council to take a look at this, not for yourselves. And I waited, you know, why do you wait now? Well, because I'm coming asking for a raise for the mayor and the city council. And I didn't want to come with it, with me still sitting in the seat, and I know that you guys are still sitting here, but at some point in time, it's gotta happen. Um, it just has to. And to me, I think it's, I think it's crazy, I think it's crazy that, that I literally, and, uh, and who is right, but I've literally lost money on months being the, being the mayor of the city of Burlington. And to me, I just think that's crazy. So, um, I'm bringing it. I'm bringing it to the council. Um, I want you guys to, uh, take a serious look at it. And I'd like to take a look at it so that there's a way that we don't have to visit this again, um, that we can, that we can put this to bed to where it's, it's taken care of, so we don't have, have to look at this again. Council?
I mean, you're, you're absolutely right. The, you know, one of the main reasons why I'm not able to run um, is, again, is because of my, the job that I have. And I guess what some would say, the real, you know, my real, the real-world job I have. Because, because it becomes either, do I sacrifice and fail at that job? Or do I fail at what I was elected to do? And that's why I didn't want to fail. I, I love this, and I love doing this. Uh, and it does close off opportunity for younger people, people who have full-time jobs with corporations that don't, um, aren't lenient. So it makes it very difficult for there to be a variety of people that sit on the council. Um, I don't know what the answer is for that, though.
And I know people have to go into this, not, not for the monetary feedback, for just, just you're passionate about it and, and you like helping people, but does anybody have any research on how long it's been static? I mean, it's been, the salary's been static for a long time. Does anybody know how long?
I don't know. I did, I did, because I knew it was coming up, take the opportunity to look at a lot of the surrounding communities and what the compensation rates were for their city council. Um, and they're, they're kind of all over the board. Um, there were a few things that I found to be fairly consistent, though. The mayor made on average fifteen, a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars more than the council. And, um, a lot of them had, um, triggers within the city council pay where, um, they would raise the rate of their income based on the same percentage that city employees got that rate, so that they weren't tackling this problem. So, for example, if city employees got a three percent raise next year, then they would raise the council rate by three percent. And there, and there was, I think, Ankeny was one, and, and I looked at a couple others. Some of them are just a few hundred dollars a month. But as far as how long it's been static, I don't know.
I just don't want it to get too high. I don't want any crazies out there.
Oh, we don't want to have a full-time job. I, I, I don't think you ever want it to become a full-time job like the supervisor. That's why we have the council management form of government. Uh, that being said, you know, the toughest thing is, is that nobody ever likes to ask for a raise. I, I, I definitely think that people are surprised when they hear what we, uh, take, uh, home for, for compensation. My biggest concern is there's a lot of talented young people out there, or older people, that maybe they're on an hourly salary. And so when they decide that they're gonna run for council and they gotta take off an hour early, they're actually losing revenue at that point in time, or they're burning vacation days or time off. And especially done it the way the council has been doing it lately, you two, very active in the community, you're at every event. It, it does, I, I could definitely see where, not necessarily till the next term, but there needs to, there could be an opportunity to increase that base rate and then put in the mechanism like you talked about, Matt, where it goes, or reflects what staff's going on, because that reflects the local economy.
It's not conducive for non-exempt employees. I mean, you, you, if you, like you said, you take an hour off of work, it's an unpaid hour.
Yeah, that's, it's a problem, uh, but, you know, I'm blessed with a couple of employers right now that let me have the time to do what I need to do to help, what I feel, try to help, uh, with the city, but it's not easy. By the same token, man, you know, I worked for my folks for a long time, and the worst thing in the world was, hey dad, you know, I could use a, I could use a couple bucks, I'm dying here. Uh, because you don't, that's not why we signed up for it. But the reality is, once you get involved, when I, when I was recruiting people, hey, man, you ought to run for council, the first thing I heard is how many hours we spend. And you get, what? And it, that's, it's tough, and I don't, we don't want it to become a full-time gig, and it shouldn't become anywhere close to that. By the same token, there's a lot of responsibility there, and someone shouldn't have to pay a price to, uh, to, to be the mayor or to be on the council. If you weren't paying those prices, that price in the last six years, you might still stay on if, if elected. And I, so I can see the, I can see why you brought it up, but it is, it's gonna be a tough vote for the, it'd be the tough vote for me anyway, and, and for a new council to come and, come and do that, so.
For me as well, it'd be a tough vote, and one of the reasons why is, um, I was cruising Facebook earlier today, and there's literally a group out in the community right now trying to raise money to do, um, a survey of Cascade Bridge. And, and it's hard for me to want to support that type of, um, increase when we're still having trouble meeting those obligations.
We're always gonna have those issues, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's not a lot of communities that have, uh, millions of dollars to, uh, to build on a bridge that's not on a ma- major thoroughfare. But here, here's the point again. First off, you've got a lot of Burlington that is, like myself, the working-class poor. You know, um, I've, I've had people where they said, where they were surprised that that's what the mayor made and that's what the council made. And I've had some other people that say, well, hey, this is a service, you should do it for free. Well, you know, we need to be mindful of who we're gonna be getting in it. People won't be able to stand in, uh, you know, the last, the one before the, the election before, I think we had twelve or thirteen, but-
Fourteen, and in fact, I talked to a couple of them, and the, the reason that maybe less-than-zelous campaigns was once they found out what council would get paid.
Well, that's very good. I didn't even know we got paid.
That's not why you do it.
Yeah, but once you get in it and you realize it, um, you're gonna take a hit.
Do you suppose the duties have grown over the years? I mean, they've got, lots of extra meetings are scheduled. Tiger Grant and, and different, I don't know. I don't know if the work demands heavier than it was before or not.
I think some of that is it, but I think the demand, because we live in a, uh, we live in a Facebook society now, so you have to be visible. And when you are visible, I mean, you guys go out in the community just like I do. So, you know, when you st- when you stop at the store, you know that it's gonna take you some time. When you go to the restaurant, um, you know you're probably gonna eat cold food. That's just the way it is. And there's no complaint about that. It's just that, again, I told somebody, we're the ones that take the hits. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's a city council. I had somebody gi- give me grief about Jim Ferrino's raise. I said, "It's not even my raise, it was Jimmy's, but I'm, but I'm taking the hit for it." It's like, well, i- if we have to jump out of the airplane, then make sure you at least give us good parachutes. And, and to me, I'm not, I'm not looking for a raise on the council that we can be rich and go buy new cars, woo-hoo! But I'm sorry, sixty-six hundred for the mayor and six thousand a year for the council for what's demanded of you here in the city of Burlington. And you can look at other communities, but we're the hub of this community. Nobody knows what's going on. Pe- people living in Mount Pleasant don't know what's going on in Mount Pleasant, but they know who we are. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I had somebody that stole one of my signs and took it to Mount Pleasant and put it in their yard. People in Fort Madison that I know, that I talk to, they know what's going on here. They didn't even know that Randolph was their mayor. You know what I'm saying? So, no, the, the pressures, the pressure's higher, the demands are higher. I'm reading, they're gonna suck the blood out of me up until the end of the year. I'll be reading to kids and running, and, no complaints, I love to do that. I love to do that. But realistically, who can afford to do that?
So I have to ask, what's your proposal?
It's for a city council salary. Oh, that's how they put it. It's for a raise, my friend. It's for a raise on the council. I already, already laid out where I was. I felt like, uh, the council, I, I, I felt like, uh, thirty-five, around thirty-five thousand dollars, wasn't asking too much to, to bump the council up. The council makes six grand a year.
On a whole, you mean, not thirty-five each?
Yeah, yeah, hold on before you stab me. Yeah, I know, yeah, but no, seriously, I'm, I'm totally serious about this. I think the council makes six thousand dollars a year, I think that needs to double, I do. I don't, I don't think that's asking, uh, too much for the council to make, uh, twelve thousand dollars a year. And for the mayor to make a little bit more than the council, because the mayor's gotta be the front man. And I'm leaving, so whoever's the front man, you'll find out, you have to run. And, and to me, and to me, I don't feel like that's, uh, I don't feel like that's asking too much. I don't feel like thirty-five thousand dollar increase for the council, I don't feel, feel like that's, uh, out of bounds. No, no, I.
Well, you might not be able to get there all at once, if we do anything.
I didn't have to go that far, but go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just saying, uh, I don't think you can get there all at once, but you can take some steps and put a, a long-term plan in. I do think, I do think one thing has changed, um, and it's specifically for Burlington. And this is no offense to earlier councils, definitely no offense to the councils for the last ten years. But I think there's a lot more trust, city staff, trust your department, but there's a lot more verification going on. Then, I've followed it for years and a lot of times, oh, well, they said this and that's what you do. But now, that's just like today with the, asking us about the streets, well, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not, I didn't go to school for that, I'm not the expert at it, I trust you. But the same token, we have to do a lot more verification. Uh, I am stunned by the amount of reading and research that, in my two years on the council, the job, I knew it would be a lot. But I didn't know, uh, it would be to the extent that it is, and I'm not complaining, cause that's what I signed up for. But I can see where you're, you're, you're going as far as if it's been static for a while. I can see, I would be agreeable to a jump, but I can't get, I can't get all the way there.
The only thing I ask, the only thing I ask is, don't think about yourselves on this, think about people that are coming behind you. Think about people like me, and, I know, I, I won't speak for, but I'll speak for Robert, Robert's not rich, he used to be my neighbor.
I know what they.
Yeah, 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 I can't, yeah, 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 it's on the agenda, he can, he can come, he's gonna be councilman.
Council one.
So, you guys know that I've worked like two or three jobs pretty much constant.
Me too.
Um, when I first started at Walmart, I joined the National Guard, so I had two job in it for a long time there, and that was a lot of responsibility. Uh, later on, I took on Mazzio's and I've been doing that for five years, I'm still doing it. And, um, it's hard for me to schedule a day in there to deliver pizza. I picked up the newspaper gig and I was forty-five dollars a week to do that, as a freelance writer. And I'll tell you, um, I had to give up that forty-five bucks a week to do this, and that's hurting me. Um, the other morning, my account was gonna be overdrafted and I scrounged up cans to put seven dollars into my account. So that I was forty-five cents in the good. And I still, I'm not worried about the money. I'm doing this because I wanna do it, I wanna, um, promote the community, I wanna represent. Um, I'm being selfless here, but I, I'm telling you that, like, I'm probably struggling as much as anybody in Burlington, I'm a little house poor. Um, I, I have plans to be good in like twenty-twenty-one, so, um, I've been working on this for a while, but like. You know, I'm, I don't feel like I'm always presentable, like, I don't have new anything, I don't buy clothes, I don't buy anything. I cut out cable, I cut out my phone, so, I literally am working class Burlington, so. Um, I see where you're coming from, and yeah, we were neighbors, and you saw me out there, I roofed my own house. Um, I turned a, a fifty-one thousand dollar house into a, a sixty-six thousand dollar house by the time I sold it to a, a good family.
But in a different neighborhood, it'd have been even more, my friend, but go ahead.
Right, so, but I, I did that roof myself, I did it in three weekends with one other guy helping me, just a friend. And I did an awesome job doing that, so like, all my projects, I'm like, I'm doing on my own, cause I can't afford to hire anybody, I'm like. You know, I'm, I have a half acre and I'm mowing that with a push mower, um, you know, and, and trying to make time to do that around all these jobs. So like, this is a big commitment and I, I jumped in a hundred percent, I wanted to do it. But, um, you know, for me to have any extras, I don't go out to eat very often. Um, I worry about how much gas is in my car, so I go to work. So, stuff like that, you know, um, I would ask people in Burlington to try to relate to us a little bit. Uh, I'm giving a lot, uh, I'm not really asking for anything in return. But if, uh, if that's a favor the community wants to do for us, uh, to make sure that we get people like me that wanna be involved and make this, uh, a great place to live, work and play. Um, it is kind of a big deal, I'm, I'm kinda touched that you even brought it up, I, it's not something I expect. I, I don't really ask for anything other than the opportunity for me to give back to you, so. Um, just wanna bring that up, and now you guys know where I'm at, uh, on things, so.
So, so, um, I had the opportunity to listen to the mayor the other day on a radio show. He brought up some good points, but the point everybody kept coming back to was the fact that it, it does have dramatic effect on non-exempt employees. So I'd make a suggestion here, I'm just crunching some numbers, Jim. So right now, we budget thirty thousand six hundred dollars a year for, uh, compensation for city council members. So my suggestion would be to, um, raise the mayor to ten thousand annually and the city council members to nine thousand annually now. Um, and, and put in there the, the attachment that, that increases as employee, not city manager, but city employees pay increases. Um, on an annual basis. I'd also like to say that it shouldn't take effect for sitting council members until after we've been re-elected.
I agree.
Um, so it would apply to Robert and it would apply to Mr. Moppen. Um, it will not apply to the three of us.
Legally, legally for, you, you can't, uh, vote on a change in salary during the months of November or December. It's, the new council would have to vote.
Okay.
And the, any change that went into place would not go into place until after the following election.
Okay, so it wouldn't apply to us anyways, okay.
It wouldn't apply, it wouldn't apply to any of us, then.
For the first two years.
Yeah, that's fine.
What's the, how come we, how, what's the, what's the reason behind?
Is it because?
State statute, and they, it's just that you, they don't want you voting yourself a raise, they want it to go through an election cycle.
Which is what I don't want to do, and I don't want to vote. So, but I think it would, it would tackle some of the issues and putting the, putting the amendment in there that raises it with whatever the city employee raises. We wouldn't have to have this conversation, I would assume.
And I like the idea of, uh.
And then, um, we, we would see a, we would see a, a less than eighteen thousand dollar increase annually to the city budget. Um, it's not what you were proposing, it's not doubling it, um, it's basically half of that. Um, but, uh, but I think it would help, it would help at least provide an environment where somebody who is a non-exempt employee, an hourly employee. Who is going to have to make concessions in order to be, to put themselves out there and do this job, is at least somewhat compensated for that time.
I, I, yeah, I, I agree, it should be more, um, but it is tough to vote on your own pay raise, uh, there'll be an election. Uh, you know, maybe we're, maybe we're, maybe we're not, depends on, if we get elected, maybe you come back, maybe you don't. But I, I, I'm, I'm really, you know, there's just so much distaste for voting for your own raise.
Which is, which is why we're not.
Yeah, I agree, Matt, that's a good idea.
Alright, uh, the other thing I was gonna add to, so, based on time, like, my schedule now, I ask for Mondays off, no matter what, so I'll have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I do stuff on my other days, but, um, I, my plan, like, my, the Thursdays in January, um, I ask for vacation so that I can have those days. So again, with making sacrifices, I'm probably gonna use my vacation up throughout the year to cover days where we have something extra, so. Um, you know, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's heartbreaking, I mean, really, even though you are very passionate about the city and, and doing all these great things, that's.
But this, it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, I wanna lead by example and I want other people to do it. Yeah, I'm gonna sacrifice for four years, but let's see how much good I can do in four years. Um, or if I run again in eight years or whatever. Um, but I wanna set the table for the next person to wanna do what I did and maybe one-up me. I love it when people pass me by, I'm, I encourage people to, uh, take it to the next level.
That's who he is, that's his rules.
Yeah, I, I really love, um, getting people to where they're gonna go, um, and if you pass me by, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think that it's good for everybody to have some, uh.
When this could be brought up, I, I, if you're interested in seeing this move forward, I'd say you'd, whether it's, having it the next wo- work session is okay, but. Before you have it as an action item, the action item would occur in just, in January.
Okay.
But you can have further, if you wanna have it on as a further discussion on the next work session, you can. If you wanna wait till the following one, you could be doing, talking about doing a set date for public hearing, but you don't know where you're. You don't know exactly where you're at for a dollar amount yet, so.
Let's talk about it again while I'm still here. At least give me that.
No, I'm.
I'm interested in a small bump.
Dude, again.
Let's not talk about it until we can do something.
Okay, okay, but, again, I just encourage you, it's a discussion item, so I just encourage you guys, again, as you move forward on that, don't, don't just think about yourselves, it's not about you guys, you have to think about who's coming behind you, please do.
Well, I think historically, a lot of retired people filled these seats that we're in.
Yeah.
And they had the time to, to do it, and now we're, we're seeing a crop of younger people. So I do think we need to see a small bump up, I'm not comfortable with the double, I'm, I'm not, I'll just tell you flat out, I think that's, that's too much.
Right on, right on. Well, I'll tell you, again, um, you, there's not a school in Burlington that I haven't been to and read at, you know, um. I, I'm always down at Wiggle Room, every time she calls, I'm there, uh, you know, and, you know, cutting ribbons, all of that, you know, it all takes time. It all takes money, none of these things happen for free. And you know, i- if the mayor shows up in a wrinkled shirt, they'll run him down, that costs money, and how can these things cost money? So, my thing is, again, um, no, this position isn't for anybody to get rich, and if somebody thinks that six thousand dollars is enough motivation to run for city council? You're confused, you're confused, nobody would take that kind of money for the abuse that you have to take, nobody, unless they were really committed to this community. But if somebody's gonna make that commitment, let's not make them feel the pain all the way through it. Alright, anything else, James?
Next work session or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm down for that, let's do that, I want one more time before we go out.
Alright.
I'll try to get some numbers together, anything else before we get ready to close? Put your shades on, Annie.
Uh, Ru, I just, I just. I do wanna remind everybody of the Thanksgiving community dinner, um, please, if you have an opportunity, I was at Rotary today, I reminded them, if you have an opportunity Thanksgiving morning and you feel like coming out and volunteering. They need help with, like Rhonda already, uh, talked about cleaning, cooking, cutting pies, delivery. Um, uh, it's a great day to, uh, to go and just give a little bit of time.
Right on. ET, anything before we roll out, peanut butter?
No, Matt's correct, and you can drop your canned goods off at the library through the twenty-sixth, which I believe is tomorrow. And then they're also looking for those fruit pies, so, get your, get your pies together and, and your cookies and donate, and take those to the high school on Wednesday between three and six.
Mr. Phillips?
Uh, had a, had an opportunity, humbling experience to be part of a food drive down at the depot. Um, Matt, if you got it in your heart, please donate to the food, the food pantries. A lot of people out there hurting, we, we weren't supposed to start till one and people were lining up at nine for a free bag of groceries. So, first of all, I'd encourage everybody to be thankful, uh, that has enough food to eat and a warm place to live. But, uh, if you think about it, you know, take some of that frivolous money you, you spent on nothing. And go buy some beans and corn canned and some bread, drop it off at the food pantries, thanks.
I just wanna piggyback on that, one time my son came home and he says, dude, I'm starving, I said, well, go get something in the fridge, son. He went to the ki- and I said, go get something from the kitchen, he went to the kitchen, he came back five minutes later, he said, there's nothing to eat. I said, you're not starving, son, you ain't hungry enough. I said, because there's stuff in there, and a hungry kid, what, I went in there and tore that stuff up, son? And we've got a lot of people that they, in their mind, they feel like they're starving, but they don't know what hunger really is, but we've got some kids in this community that do. So let's just be mindful of that moving forward into the holidays. MP T?
Um, just for everyone to have a good holiday and be kind to others.
Amen.
That's it.
Amen.
I'm not done, Nick? How you doing? What week is it, Nick? Would you like to come remind everybody what week it is? It's gonna be a great weekend.
Cooter, we're gonna change his nickname to Cooter.
Cooter?
It's the week that Nebraska makes their bowl game.
Right, right. I hope they're all taking them balloons home with them, I just want you to know that. Go Hawks, Nick.
Put some bass in your voice, put some bass in your voice.
Sorry, Jim, I had to make sure that that was brought up.
Right, right on, right on. James?
No, I don't have anything to give.
Okay, alright then, this means adjourned, everybody, thank you very much, good night.